No, I have some need to just in case I'm bothering you or something. But as soon as the report comes, I don't need either.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For record, the meeting of the board supervisor is scheduled for Friday, April 20, 2021, at the community center, 3,500 bed water dry. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Good sense agenda. Do you have motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Excuse me. I had asked a couple of things on the trade report, so I just opened the answer. On page, well, you can, so page thirty two of the, of the report, I'm looking at checks that were issued. And there was a check issued for recreational net, 2,300 to 78,000. So I just, I, I guess my question was like, who was the name of the 2,300 dollars? Why did you spend so much money on that? Difficult to answer.
No, not really difficult at all. So what I actually need to read on this board now is we use our IT consultant to give us the cases for a laptop. How many laptops look at different nature typically a laptop you're just using the remote. We're not really using it as a desktop as well. Hers is a dual purpose. So hers came with a documentation, additional accessories that I heard to dock it at her work station. Actually utilized two monitors, so there's additional cost. I think the documentation was an additional cost of $500 just for the documentation plus the laptop. So it wasn't just a laptop of 7,600. Other items that I took in my, my number. So that makes it 80,000 dollars.
I think if you kind of watch our special, that's only to bring to the staff.
Come on, will you?
Seems that we started by, that started out without the two. To make 80,000 dollars for that top.
I've spent more than that on a laptop before. What you want to do with it, how it needs to be specked down. So, you know, if, if a spec was what we really needed, that's not outrageous for a laptop. You know, a basic laptop that you just carry around, this is going to be your entire desktop system. I'd spend more than that.
It just looked like a big number, that's what I called it out. The other thing is on page thirty, we spent 6,000, 8,000, 6,000, better, $12 for billboards. And my question was, why, I didn't know we still build billboards.
So we are, there was a, and we'll go back and research, I'll bring up the staff reports. There was a meeting, I want to say it was midsummer, through geography process, golf and recreation both presented a marketing plan to the board on what we're going to do this year. There was $50,000 allocated within the recreation advertising budget. Their proposal was to keep some of the locations for billboards and continue to do some of the digital marketing advertising campaigns. So this is a continuation of last year's billboards. Location back.
This is local?
These were the same, it was the same locations, so there's some local and there's some, there was one I four, I believe there was one in there. In the same location. This was the marketing campaign. This was the, this was the agreement I was presenting to the marketing plan to the board supervisor. We got rid of WDM, which is all the marketing company. We never kept the locations back. They never really went over the market.
We, we went over the general, I mean, we didn't talk about the detail of every billboard. I remember the billboards were part of the discussion that we had on the market.
So we need to go back and, let's see, if we looked at it, looked at it this year, another budget process. I'd like to have this for one of those years.
The last one.
Yeah. I think so, I think while we're on the subject here, because of the trade report, I just wanted to go over my lap few numbers, obviously we have a lot of financial recognition as well. But this year, out of February, we are about $180,000 above pace for assessment revenue on the general funds side. So that's been, you know, a positive trend, we'll continue to do more settlements with page five. Some of the bondholders bringing those assessments that are delinquent, bringing those to cash current. So once again, this is kind of, this is going to be a one time shot to bring it current. So we won't see a $180,000 increase year over year. This is just kind of retrofitting everything that was delinquent in the past. So once again, this is positive. You see this lane is showing a $300,000 increase over last year. That is attributed to the $240,000 from our trade end. So that's why that number's so odd. Now, one of the shows, our forecast shows us breaking even for the total. For the utility side, we're above pace, for revenues about $20,000. And overall, the forecast was showing the utility fund that has us February, showing a net positive with addition for about $700,000. So right now, between the two funds, we're about $700,000 checking out for the year. If we stay on pace with the practical projects that we have, our typical operations, that's kind of where we stand as of February. We changed, we changed the way we put collections of these assessments, right? They're all plus, aren't they? So now the collection change that we made, you couldn't do a wash payment. So if you had $700, $700 assessment, you couldn't come and re-bid it. Right, how are you making $700? You could choose not to get $700 and still be delinquent, so we're going to talk a little 1% per month. So if someone's still delinquent, how's that? Without $707. And we have to take other less efforts to go get that money. So sending out the demand letter, we're going to send another note here.
Once again, that doesn't mean everyone's paid like the way it should, you've just changed the, how I can pay. I show them, top of your head, for the way you changed with the line was last year or the first year. People may go, wait, you changed with me.
Yeah, so they're pretty much aligned, we're at a 94% collection rate right now, so there's about 6% of the single family dwellings. Miami doesn't make a landing, that's a whole other ball of wax itself. But we're right on pace with the single family residences. I think once again, last year, we kind of laxed off on foreclosures, but we're going to write those up here in May. And then once we set out the manuals, we can get direct home, we'll get the 98%, but until we get the 70%.
Any other questions?
Any public comment?
Any questions? Supervisor Hutteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yeah, yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Okay, the action agenda. I'm going to change things around here. Calls my, no reason for me to even talk about. I'm going to change, I'm going to use a resolution number 2021-03, a resolution for the Southern Lake Improvement Improvement District to appoint a new supervisor to fill the seat vacated by Joe Branson's pursuit to section nine dash 107 Islands County Ordinance. Our general manager has told me that he has talked to our new applicant. And she is very up to date on any of these things we're going to vote on, so back to move that, move that to the front.
Motion to nominate Beverly for the new supervisor position to replace Joe Branson.
We have second.
Let's, let's go back to what we're talking about. Let's go back to what we're talking about, talking about changes to the
Agenda.
Change to the agenda so that she could participate in the votes. That's, I don't think we've ever done that.
No, we haven't, we haven't.
There's no reason we can't.
I mean, it's kind of been done before, so we're just going to, you say, what is the reason we do it?
My assumption would become is Mr. Herrick isn't here, but I, I don't know.
That's not my problem.
True, Mr. Herrick's not here. True, but president says the agenda, so.
I'm going to turn the panel over to Mr. Brooks for a minute.
Well, I won't.
I'm going to stop it. That's, that's her problem.
Has it been a question with that motion?
It's permitted, so, but the problem is, is we have three supervisors and then we need three votes to pass it.
I'm not sure we're in the voting.
Motion, motion in the second for appoint Beverly Phillips as the new supervisor.
So we already agreed that I had all of the changes.
President says the agenda, Mr. Gilpin is the president, he's decided to revise things, there's, I don't see an issue with that.
I'll try to.
Chris.
Are we going to have, just going to have a discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, discussion and reading, so any other comment?
I'd like to hear from her.
What we want, what we want. Any other comment?
Bill, don't cross residents. I understand this process has been going on quite a while. And understandably, we have a very important business to run here. And why can't Mr. Phillips be appointed as a senior supervisor? And so for vote, at least he will be involved in some of the daily news. I mean, there would be a practical solution until we can get four, three votes.
Beverly, please come up and tell and talk to us, why do you want, or you really need to come up? Would you like to come up and change something?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Beverly Phillips, and I'm in the cause of my social community. I bring a wealth of knowledge to not only the law enforcement community, but the, you know, large. I've done a lot of studying with all the data that I've been given, and I've been actually capable of helping see. And I'm looking forward to stuff.
Any other comment by the board? Chris.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Hutteling?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
We need to do the oath of office.
You're going to get sworn in, Beverly.
Okay. Repeat after me, I, Beverly Phillips.
I, Beverly Phillips.
A citizen of the state of Florida and of the United States.
A citizen of the state of Florida, the United States of America.
And being an officer of the Southern Lake Improvement Improvement District.
And being an officer of the Southern Lake Improvement Improvement District.
Board of Supervisors.
Board of Supervisors.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
To hereby solemnly swear.
To hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And that I will honestly.
And that I will honestly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform, perform the duties entrusted to me.
Perform the duties entrusted to me.
While in office as supervisor.
While in office as supervisor.
Of the Southern Lake Improvement Improvement District.
Of the Southern Lake Improvement Improvement District.
Board of Supervisors.
Board of Supervisors.
And will not neglect.
And will not neglect.
Any duty imposed.
Any duty imposed.
Upon me by law.
Upon me by law.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations. I want to do some of that. Congratulations to 20 of our supervisors. Like I said, I hope that it takes six months for you to realize that if you've got it, but I got it, you're going to go to enable it. So congratulations. We're going to go to the auditor's financial presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess I'll begin with congratulations.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoyed and found you graduated satisfaction to the district. It was an important job. I wish you, I wish love. So we'll start with the, the bottom opinion, we'll go to next slide. We should unmodify the opinion again this year, which is the highest opinion we can give as auditors. We also issued letters regarding testing internal controllers, compliance with state statutes regarding investment policies, and other compliance requirements and votes by the auditor general, which the district was implying. The main activity for the year is, excuse me, the general fund is mostly flat. It has a healthy reserve representing 102% of 2020 expenditures. And that includes capital outlay, so that, you know, you can, you have some discretionary in there as well. The total capital outlay of $1 million, including the kitchen clubhouse from the shop floor door and road service and projects that we threw up here. The water fund increased 132,000. There was a capital outlay of $600,000, $600,000, including the completion of the Matanzas Close Station. Here's if I can look back at the general fund, any fund balance. You can see the depression over there, and you can see mainly that 2020 was flat. Yes? Was that in the background?
Sure.
No problem, yeah, if you have any questions, go get a marker and write. Sometimes I forget to mention that. Here we have the, a look back on the revenue expenditures, and you see the dark blue is the net of transfers. And this year, you had transfers in from the water fund, so it offset some of the transfers out to the belt fund. We just present that net for simplicity. You can see that again, that the general fund was flat for the year, and you can look back and see how prior years have gone. Here's the water sewer fund, and you can see the increase resulting in higher utility bill rates. Overwhelming consumption, I believe it was comparable to prior year, so you can see.
Sorry.
You can see the impact of the additional income on the water fund there. And I would like to take any questions that you may have. None?
You're fine, I mean, I would put.
Okay, I'll try, I'll try my best.
Based on how it's funded.
Well, now, a couple of years ago, you might be familiar with the, the change in basic creative stance on the presentation of the assessment debt. I think that increased your borrowing capacity greatly, and I think you have, you've got plenty of you've got plenty of revenues in the water fund, especially for the water and utility projects. There's lots of lending opportunities for that specifically, our banks, there's a state revolving fund, which allows for capacity expansion or rehabilitation of, there's also USDA road development funds that are available. All of these are available, that you can pledge sewer, water sewer revenues only, and they even have no other, no other guarantees you have to make to repay those. I think you have, and I think you, you have, you have an enormous capacity sparrow specifically on the water fund. If you look at most government and major size of water funds, you see quite a bit more debt, and it's quite standard that you would, you can take out debt to pay for future capacity and to pay for, so that basically the users now can pay for the ongoing repairs that need to be, that need to be happened and the improvements that need to be made. So I think there's an opportunity there for borrowing. As the government, the district as a whole, the financials, I know you've had problems in the past because of the negative caused by the assessment debt on the financials, so you have an opportunities there that you can pledge assessment revenues if you wanted to. You don't have a whole lot of other large revenue sources, and you know, you talk to, you look at cities, they have state share revenues, communication service tax, those are typically pledged for improvements of some kind. Getting the, I know you've been looking into getting into the county infrastructure surtax. That's another revenue source that can be pledged. If you, you know, once you have that revenue source, and you can guarantee that you will have it, then you can borrow against it. And cities commonly do that because those roll on a, a 10 year period. So you can borrow a 10 year note against the future anticipated infrastructure surtax.
So we're in quite better shape than we were a couple years ago.
Yes, and I think the district's always been, always been run very, you know, conservatively, and there's always been a nice healthy reserve in the general fund, which allows you to weather any attacks or any type of scenario that could come up, your reserves are very healthy. The GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a reserve of at least 20% of next of your operating expenditures, and you're well of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank you for those comments too, because we have a group here that thinks we're overspenders, so thank you.
It's a difficult, it's very, it's very difficult, I will say that, and it's always political, and everyone's had a opinion. And that's, that's the beauty of democracy. Any other questions? All right, well, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the action agenda is resolution number 2021-04, vote nine, dash, vote eight. So as a resolution of the Southern Lake Improvement Improvement District to award the bid for the turtle run Aqua T project, designated as RFP 21, vote one, to Land Deer Incorporated. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry, I'm getting a question. Hey, is there any comment, right of order?
I was hoping Earl would be here, Earl was here to talk about it. So Earl, if you tell us what the members trying to.
Good morning, you do, congratulations. So. Obviously, we did the RFP, it came back without one of the stipulations that we had, so we reached out to the contractor, had them look at it, include that price. They came back unit price wise at 36 Ts, we, which were over the budget that we had allotted. We went back and revisited, looked at what we could do to fit within the budget number and address the concerns that we had told the ladies that we would do. We put together a plan that included 19 Ts, we have since made that 21 Ts. I still feel like unit price wise and square footage wise, it will fit into the plan that we put in place based on the numbers that we got back from the contractor. So what we're proposing is to do the plan that we put forward, which is labeled as the 2021 T Improvement Plan. It includes Ts on turtle run and deer run, as well as Ts that are not just Aqua T related. A couple of the red T areas on both courses are improved by virtue of doing the Aqua Ts. It gives us more team space for those holes. We also included a gold T, gold Ts and red Ts on hole 13 and 14 on deer run. I have ridden with, like I said, several board members, talked through this plan. I was asked a question about, were there any Ts that we were leaving out that might affect the ladies? That's where we went from the 19 to 21. One of those came from a concern from Mr. Herrick when we rode, the other came from Mrs. Phillips. I rode her because she's been involved in other, on the green committee level, so I wanted to make sure with her that she felt like that we had addressed everything that we had told the ladies that we would address. So we feel comfortable that this plan will take care of what we've said. We think it addresses certainly the, the concerns that started this whole process, which was the Aqua T ladies feeling hindered by mounds and fairways and location of their Ts, as well as the forced carry on one of the holes on number two turtle. All that has been addressed in this plan, so our recommendation is to move forward with, with Land Deer being the contractor at our, our previous budget number, which was 120,000.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
Yeah, I, I have first a question for our attorney. When I, when I first read this, it was, I was, I was a little concerned of the, of the process, that we're, what we're really approving is what we think will fit within the budget for the work that we want to do, which is a little bit different than what was bid. And I'd be more comfortable if we actually had a, a firm bid, that this is what we can do for that money. But my question is, have we changed the scope of work enough that we need to go out and rebid this?
No, not my opinion, because we only had a, we had a sole bidder. So that when it comes to, to publicly bidding stuff, my general concern is that we don't want to invite a bid protest, but since there was only one bidder, that's not a concern.
So no, nobody who was contemplating a bid and didn't bid on the other project, but might have bid on this one, has no room for complaint?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else?
So I would like to know who authorized the change of the plan?
He's asking us to authorize it now, nobody.
Somebody, the original bid committed to do eighteen holes, turtle run, Aqua T's and Aqua T's. That's what the RFP was. And I'd like to know who authorized it.
There was no authorization in the beginning on the RFP, that was what was put out. The contractor, who was the only contractor to return a bid, had bid unit price wise on 36 Ts, not 18.
He's putting information only on turtle one, the diagram sent to him, everything is pertaining to turtle.
But the square footage that he put together was based on 36 holes, not 18, that's.
He didn't follow the RFP though, is that correct?
He, he submitted basically more square footage than was requested.
And then he resubmitted a number of 180,000 if he wanted to go back to do turtle and turtle one.
Yes.
And then we changed that, so instead of doing all the Ts on turtle. And then we changed that to instead of doing all the Ts on turtle, like we originally intended to do, now we're doing a mixture of Ts on both holes.
Yes, because our, our ultimate goal was to try to address the concerns that the Aqua T ladies had put forth.
And what's going to happen next year?
Nothing would happen next year.
So all the Ts that are flat now, and will not be adjusted. The women are going to be okay with that?
Based on my conversation with the ladies involved, and a final ride through with Mrs. Phillips to say, is there anything that we've missed out on? Yes.
Because the original thing was the ladies didn't want to play on flat Ts.
That, that's not the exact reason though. They don't want to play on flat Ts when there's a mound. For example, hole number four on turtle, there's a huge mound in the fairway that when you're playing from the raised Ts on the wider goal, you don't see. But if you're playing down where they are, that mound affects how they hit the ball. So those were their concerns. It wasn't that the Ts were necessarily raised. It's location, some of them, yes, it's that they're raised.
The women want a T box instead of a T.
Yes.
Or you're not getting them T boxes instead of T on all the holes.
That's, that's...
Is that true?
Technically, we're not building a T box on number nine deer. But number nine deer...
I just don't want it to come back before I support, and I'm not saying you're wrong in what you're doing, I think the way you stand on it is how are we...
Well, I would, I would disagree with you on that. I would disagree with that.
We put in an RFP to do A, B, and C, not to do...
It's, it's not our fault what the contractor came back with. All we can do is then go back to the contractor and say...
Excuse me a minute, excuse me a minute. Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Gilpin?
This is a conversation we're supposed to be...
What?
Just let him speak and then you can speak. We, we can't act like a bunch of teenagers here. We know your opinion, you've already left that note. So please, let's conduct these meetings like professionals. Please.
Keep it to yourself.
No, I'm not going to. As long as I'm president, we're not going to act like this. Go ahead, Earl.
So we got a bid back from the contractor. Obviously, it didn't fit within what the parameters were. We reached out to the contractor, asked them to revisit it. They did that. It came up, to your point, at 108,000. And talking with Mr. Stiegel, the original bid number was 120. We said, could we go and adjust some stuff on deer run within that number and still stay within the original budget? It became apparent, based on square footage, unit pricing, that we could do that. So that's what I was charged with doing, is putting together a plan that we felt like would address that. The, the sheer fact is, when we said 18 holes on turtle, or whatever it might be, there's certain holes that you would not put a raised T box because of where the landing area is for the rest of golf play. So there's, there's holes that it just doesn't make sense. So do we build a T for the sake of building a T? Or do we try to address the concerns of the Aqua T ladies, which was the original idea for the T program to start with? So again, I'm not here to decide one way or the other. I'm just saying, in my conversations with the ladies who play the Ts, yes, this addresses the majority of the concerns that they've ever had. It's not to say a year from now, or five years from now, a lady gets into that group and she thinks that there's a hole. But if it's a, a single hole or a hole by hole basis, it's not out of the norm to do adjustments or to build a single T in the house. I, I don't see that being an issue for the next foreseeable future. But I can't guarantee that. I don't think anybody can.
All right, fine. I appreciate what you're saying, and perhaps in the future, you should be more, you should clarify more of what you're going to try to accomplish with an RFP than putting down something and then something else coming.
I can't control what the contractor came back with, but...
Control what we submitted.
Yes, we did, but...
Any other...
Yeah, I actually have one more question. I don't know if it's for Earl or Dan, but since we haven't got the commitment from the contractor to do the proposed 21 Ts for the 120,000 dollars, what happens if he comes back and says, I can't do it for that grant?
What I would recommend out of this meeting is that we go back to the contractor. If this is the plan that we want to try to adopt, I'll get the contractor to resubmit numbers. I think we bring that back to the, the next meeting and vote on that number. So that it's a hard number, that would be my recommendation. But I, I'm 99% sure the contractor is going to fit within that original budget, based on my previous conversations with them, based on unit pricing. But I can't speak for the contractor, so...
Okay. And I, I guess my question would be, the, the way that the current item reads is we're empowering Mr. Stiegel to negotiate the contract for this, but we don't have an option if he can't.
I think that's fine. I, I don't see it as being an issue. And if we need to adjust the square footage on some tee to make it fit within the budget, we can certainly do that. But I don't think that's an issue.
Okay. So what you're saying then is that we're, we're giving you the power to negotiate the agreement and if necessary, change the scope of what we're approving in this meeting?
Correct. Because there is no real scope. It's 21 Ts, but that could be one big one and 14 little ones and, you know. So I think that's, that's kind of the adjustment that would be made, rather than the money. I would say 120,000 should be a firm number.
And that's how we currently have it drafted, 120,000 is the dollar amount. My recommendation would be to put together what we, you know, have Mr. Stiegel negotiate the way we want it to appear. Have Mr. Gilpin sign it as president, submit it to the contractor. If the contractor executes it, great. And if they can't, if they're unwilling to execute what we want, then they would have to come back to the board for, you know, for, they would basically do a counter offer. That counter offer would have to come back to the board.
Do we have drawings on what you're proposing?
There's drawings and construction docs included with that RFP that was sent out, that, that shows the...
That's what, that one drawing is going to strike the whole?
Yes. It's a, it's a uniform tee. It's based on square footage. It's a company that builds golf courses every day. So if the, if the size changes from a 14-foot wide tee to a 21-foot wide tee, the construction process is still the same. It's made, it's based off unit pricing. How much material they have to bring in, how much sod they have to sod after the thought.
Any other comment by the board?
Well, I, I would just like to say that I think that the solution is a good one. I mean, I, I like that we're not just building Ts for Tees sake, and that we've gone back and looked at where we can do the most good for the amount of funds that we've allotted for this project. I, I applaud Earl for that. I'm, I'm not thrilled with the way that we got here, but I, I think the solution is good and I can support it.
Any public comment?
I do have one more. Hey, Beverly? Are you okay with this?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay. So no future T promises going forward? That's the thing.
I'm not going to say that. I wasn't warned yesterday that I could give them all.
If you're okay with it?
I'm okay.
Supervisor Phillips? Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Sure.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Okay, the next is a discussion on the general manager vacancy. Uh, Dan, do you want to say something?
You want me to leave or what?
No.
This came up at the last meeting, which was in a bertering end that we were talking about, specifically to review resume. And I think the, if I could paraphrase, you guys were wanting me to commit to staying longer, if you so desired, and I'm fine with that. I'm not hung up on any particular date. I'm more interested in what do we get done, as long as I'm getting done what you want done, and I'm having fun doing it, and I don't see any reason to worry about it. The issue for me is if we need to pick up a date, we need to figure out what that date is, or at the head of time, that we can recruit a general manager. And I, I would commit to it. I will give you plenty of notice, probably, if I'm not, if I'm putting my family walk away. Beyond that, I don't really have a specific date in mind.
The currently existing contract is for six months though. So if it's going to be on, go beyond that date, we'll have to do, you know, a new contract, or at least a contract extension.
Yeah, I think it provides for extension based, if, on the, at the board's, so discussion, which is fine with me.
But Kenny, to get on that, do we, I know we're going to look to replace Michael as well, and I can bet that we're going to have to get him.
Well, depends on the day. We call Michael.
I mean, what is the best interest of the district? Do we hire a general manager first, and then a replacement for Mike? Or do we take them if we can get them?
That's, that's pretty much your option. If...
Well, that's what I'm asking. I don't know what is the best way to...
If, if you guys tell me that you want me to stay until February, March, then I will immediately go start recruiting an operations person. That position should be filled in plenty of time, so it will take us time to do that. What we don't need to happen is that Mike and I both walk out of here at some date.
Is there any way that we can provide a week, one that would lead you through May of 2022? That way you could get us all the way through season? At the minimum with, with an extension on the end of that?
I'm not hung up on a date. I, I don't really care. That's fine. That's what, that's the board's question. It's up to me.
In my view, we should be recruiting for both positions now and finding the best candidates. Obviously, we, we put out a, a simple notice that we were looking for a general manager and did not get the quality of applicants that we were looking for, so we need to look harder. I think we need to start looking for the operations position as well. In the ideal world, I would like our long-term general manager to hire us, but the truth is, I have total confidence in Dan, the job that he's done in the few months that we've had him. It's shown me that he's looking after the best interests of the district. So I'm not opposed to him recruiting and finding the right person for the, the operations position. But I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't say, okay, we're going to have Dan until May, so let's not start looking until December. We need to be looking now and, and finding the right person for that role as soon as possible. And it may be that Dan is here for two years. Who knows? But the, the goal would be to find somebody that can fill that position on a long-term basis sooner rather than later. And, you know, I'm, I'm not anxious to push Dan out, but I'm not anxious to, to hold on to him for the sake of holding on to him. The evidence is, it's going to take a while to find the right person, and I think we should be recruiting now, by about a month. I'm not tied up to a date either.
I think without question, we need to start looking for the operations person now. I have not done so because I wasn't sure what you guys wanted to do, but we can certainly do that. And I'm okay with whenever, at your place, or whenever you want us to start trying to find my replacement, that's fine with me. This is a short-term deal to begin with, and I'm not looking for this to be a long-term career. The answer to Beverly's question is yes, if that's what it takes, I'll say to May. The answer to Neil's question is if we find the right person tomorrow, then I'm good with that for us. So I'm kind of, whatever works best for the district. How's that for a non-exception?
That's pretty good, yeah.
Yeah, I think that is the exact right answer. And, you know, again, I, I know for a fact, we're not going to find the right person tomorrow. So we're, we're going to have you for a while. But it's going to take time to find the right person, so I think we start now.
Where do you have any other comments?
Well, I think, remember, I need a couple things. One is, I think we need job description for, if we don't have a job description, I guarantee that. For the replacement for Mike, exactly, who are we trying to hire? And then I think we have to bite the bullet, and I know some people are close to it. I don't believe we have a big priority in finding anybody. Why don't we have to hire a detective to help you find them? I mean, I think until we accept that fact, we're going to know.
I would agree with that assessment for the general manager's position. I'd, I did have one pretty decent candidate, but I think operations might be a different story. And that's, that's a lot less difficult for somebody who's trying to, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm a banker, I don't know anything about history, but we have enough people that know stuff, and I was going to be a lawyer if I knew about some of the rules, you know, I'm trying to watch it, but, um, I don't think it's going to be as difficult for, for an operations person as it is for a general manager.
If we're talking about potentially hiring a headhunter to fill the general, or find candidates for a general manager position, I'd just remind the board that Dan has the ability to, you know, bidding is not, public bidding is not required unless it's estimated cost more than $25,000. I'd be astounded if it costs more than $25,000 to hire a headhunter to find the district some, some options. So if you want to, you know, authorize Dan to go ahead and, you know, look into getting a headhunter to find someone for the district...
As long as he stays $25,000 threshold, there's no reason that, you know, that, you know, he can make those expenditures.
We, we do have an RFP that was, it's righted the other way. And advertised, we got back disappointing results, so, so we're not qualified. Somebody's got to do it for it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. And I think getting, getting a headhunter to help us fill that position is the right thing to do.
I'd say, for your information, we have an RFP that Lady Ray put out that you can actually use to go, and they actually did cost more than $25,000. So, um, I don't know if that necessarily would affect you. It's a really different story, but it could be a lot of extra money.
Dan, could you, I mean, the, the general manager position and getting a headhunter can be a separate issue. Could you, could you, before the next meeting, look into that and see what prices are and bring it back to us?
For a headhunter?
But I, I think today, we should decide what we're going to do with Kenny. The headhunter, we certainly need a, a general manager. I don't think anybody can look at that. But I think what we need now is to extend Dan to whatever we decide to do. And then, uh, next, next meeting, Dan, could you come back to some prices? Is that okay with everybody? I, I think he, he, you know, he's waiting, he's waiting to see if, I, I thought he called me. He, he hasn't had an operations guy yet because he didn't know what we wanted as far as extending him. I mean, I thought that's what you said.
That's correct. I just want to make sure that, that I don't walk out the same time Mike walked out.
That's right.
We need, we need continuity here. That's all I'm trying to say.
Right. I agree, but, but you know...
If you want me to say I'm leaving in September, that's fine, we can do that. If you want me to say I'm leaving in March, that's fine, we can do that. If you want me to go to May, I'm okay.
Let me go back to the, 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 the advertising, the, the, we didn't sign any applicants that are disqualified for Michael. So I don't know what's going to do, and he decided to leave with a headhunter, he's the one, I don't know. I don't, I don't think we're going to find an operations manager. I don't, I don't think we're going to find an operations manager, so how are we going to go without it, we're just trying.
Well, we haven't actually tried, until the operations kind of position.
But of all the resumes, you got the general manager.
But they, those were applications for the general manager position, so some operations manager will hopefully get a different set of applicants.
Well, possibly one of those that, like a general manager, might be more qualified to be the operations, we're going to look at that.
That's what I thought, I thought you had one that was more qualified for the operations and, and, um-
Possibly. Everybody wants to get paid more, it's just a question of, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out, I, I don't know if the guy who takes you off is a general manager, I don't know if he's a general manager.
We shouldn't, do we want to advertise them? For an operations guy, or any guy that's in the industry?
We, I wouldn't do it on Indeed, I would, I would say we should go for a, for a HR group, we need to bring them back, back in there.
Okay, uh, I think what, what we need before we go to public comment is, which way are we going with this, do you, you, you want to make a motion to stand Dan, or you want to keep him the way he is, or, I mean, we need to do something at this point.
I, I think everybody, including Dan, seems to be comfortable with where he is right now, with a six-month extendable contract, and staying on as long as we need it, uh, but I don't know that we need to do anything specifically with Dan, other than to direct him that, you know, we're fine with him recruiting the operations position, uh, we shouldn't look at his tenure as an issue in that regard, we just look at the, the goodwill of the district in that regard, and have him go out and recruit, and if he can hire the right person, terrific. That would be my direction, keep on with Dan and the contract that we got, review it before we get to six months, to, just at renewing it, uh, but just give him the direction now that, yeah, don't, don't hold back any, actions this year, that we, that power should be.
It's up to you, I'll have to do it.
Take your nice guy hat off, and is this okay with you?
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay with us, yeah.
Okay. So is there any public comment?
Senator, having somewhat of a background as a social manager, I just hope that you have a detailed fit, what a, what a manager has to do. I know Mike has done a great job, but, you know, you're going to hire somebody who's running that facility, with all its custodial, destruction, bids, all of that has to do, he has to know what he's doing.
Phil North, Senator, the hiring of a general manager is an important factor we have here, and, uh, the replacement of, of Canyon, and possible Dan, uh, it's a very difficult situation. I know in the past we've had, uh, general managers come as a candidate's night type of thing, and they introduce to the public and see if there's a correct fit, and it's, that's very important. You may have all the credentials in the world, but if you're not the right fit. Uh, Dan is, uh, for example, has been on probably every committee, he's been on the board of supervisors, he understands what's going on here. If you bring in somebody from the outside, the learning process has to be very long. So, you know, you're looking at people with tremendous experience, and if it takes looking with a headhunter, excuse me, the voice here, allergies, um, but having a headhunter professionally look and probably filling your needs, I think is a very good idea. I don't like spending $25,000 to pay somebody to look up a classified ad, I like to have somebody that, that can really, really help us with this, uh, transformation of, uh, a general manager, it's very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I guess we'll leave it, Dan, and you have authority to act like you're going to be here for the next 50 years. Okay, we'll go to- Add-on items? Oh, I don't see it here. Okay, recreation plan, I'm sorry. Oh, I see it now.
President Gilpin-
I see it now.
Ariel, is it home, she is quarantining because her husband was exposed to COVID-19, so she is going to try to zoom in, and I'm assuming we can make that happen. We should be pretty good at it by now, it's been going on for a year. Ariel, do you want to take over? Are you there? We aren't as good as I thought we were.
Dan, do we have COVID-19 insurance?
Probably not. I have a shot, how's that? Actually, while we're waiting on Ariel, we, uh, I got a call from the county, they're, the state is sending a bus over next week, I think, and they want to have it at Sunning Lake at least one day, and I told them, great, bring it on, I think it has the Johnson and Johnson shot, or, I forget which one it is, like a, a one, the one shot, instead of the double, uh, but I don't know what day yet, it's, um-
Okay.
They're supposed to let me know.
Are you trying to get Ariel on the phone?
Your on speaker. Your on speaker.
Or not?
Not really.
Maybe we, we should table this until she's available?
Yeah, I don't know that there's any big rush to do this, um, this is basically the concept anyway, all we're going to do is use this to put money in the budget for next year, so, and next year and the following years, so-
If I, if I could make the suggestion, because I have a lot of questions, as you well know, um, maybe what we do is, if the, the other people here have questions, we should all send them to Ariel, and then at the next meeting, she'll have the answers for us.
Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to listen.
And we can probably go from there. I think that's the best way to go, trying to do it over the phone.
Okay, whatever y'all want to do, it's okay with me.
I think it'd be difficult.
I'm, I'm okay with tabling this discussion until another meeting, when Ariel can be here with us, um, to address it. Frankly, as I've kind of expressed in past meetings, I'm, I'm not real anxious to move forward with any of this, other than perhaps approving the plan, um, until I know more about the infrastructure issues that we're dealing with, because there's only so much money to go around.
Yeah, but we got to get this, we have to settle on this.
Yes.
So that when we're ready.
Right, but, but again, I'm, I'm in no rush, so I'm fine with tabling this for a discussion when Ariel can be here with us.
They're trying to put some of it in the budget for next year.
Well, 2022, yeah, but we, just because it's in there doesn't necessarily mean we have to spend it.
I think it's best to wait until she's here.
Well, Dave, what do we need, a motion to table? Or is that just a discussion?
Just a discussion item, yeah.
Tell Ariel thank you for trying. Okay, do we have any add-on items?
So we did have one add-on item, I sent out a communication from T.E. James Construction, uh, they have a new construction build going on at 5105 Pebble Beach, uh, the initial plan submitted to the district only had a singular driveway going in, the owners have since decided that they wanted to provide a circular driveway and add an additional extension, so, uh, we sent the plans to Drew, Drew did the mock-up again of what that percentage would come out to be, it does exceed the 30% requirement, and I provided all the wording from both our code minimum maintenance standards, as well as our construction permits, where we require that that prepared surface can no, cannot exceed 30% of the front yard, what we deem front yard. So we went back, we tried to, um, if you see the calculation now where Drew kind of boxes in the front yard, it does not include the right-of-way, we did some adjustments to see if going forward, we should include it, we should not, it really didn't change much, it didn't change the percentage, so going forward, our recommendation, if the board's in agreement, is that this new requirement should be pushed up to 50%. 50% will give anybody, anyone the ability to do a similar driveway, which is circular, um, anything over 50%, then would be an extreme, and could come to the board for approval, but at the 50% limit, you know, Drew and myself could approve these during the construction process and not have a problem not bringing them every time to the board going forward. So, once again, we're not opposed to continue to do it this way, that would just be our recommendation, if, we haven't denied one yet, so if we're going to continue to approve them at 45%, I don't see the purpose of keeping it at 30 going forward.
This one house that's attached here, that's under 30%?
No, it's, so if you see the red now, it's at 46.4 with the additional, it used to be under 30, but it's going to be at 46.4% now with that-
Oh, I see, I see.
Additional driveway going-
Which is over our requirement?
Our requirement right now is 30, so-
So you want to take it to 50?
I want to take it to 50, yeah.
Look, would we need a, a resolution to do that, David?
I mean, not to do this one, but my recommendation is if we're going to permanently change it to 50, yeah, we'd need to make that, uh, do a resolution to make that amendment to the policy manual.
We can bring that next meeting, if the board so desires.
What are the negatives of taking it to 50, are there any?
I don't see any negatives, but once again, the, I, I want to say the intent of the initial 30% was to limit the amount of prepared surface area, you know, once again, we want to keep as much landscaping, green area, to percolate and for drainage purposes. Aesthetically, once again, we're getting new homes, they're larger in size, we get a lot of homes here and something like that, have a golf cart garage, have additional garden space, they just want a larger surface area, um, so really, I, once again, there's no right or wrong, 30% is not wrong, 50% is not right. It's just aesthetically pleasing for 50%.
Yeah.
Well, I think in addition, a lot of, a lot of houses now don't have concrete driveways, they have this, uh-
Pavers.
Pavers, which is not as impermeable, it's not like a dirt, but it's not as impermeable as concrete would be. And that's part of the deal, is you want the water to perk instead of running off on your neighbors.
So, I'm, I, I like grass, um, so, not, not that I'm from Colorado, but, the, I went over everybody's head. Uh, so, I, I like the 30%, but as Omar says, we're, we're approving just about any request that comes through, so it makes no sense to stay at 30%. Um, the question I would have, based on the last comment from, from Dan, would be, should we say that the, uh, requirement is 30% unless you do pavers, and then we'll allow up to 50%?
It's up to you, yeah.
Or just make it a simple 50%?
Make it a simple 50%.
You have, uh, Beverly just said she wants to make it a 50%.
I agree. I mean, I would agree with that.
So I think-
And I would too.
Sounds, sounds like we got a consensus to just change, change it, approve this driveway and, and get a resolution to change it to 50%.
And it's only because everybody that builds one of these nice, nice homes is coming to us, and they're not, they're not coming to us because they think they're special, it's just, they can afford to build these things, and I, I don't think we should, uh, hamper their-
No, so we'll, we'll go ahead and notify Tommy that this one's fine, and then at the next meeting, we'll bring back the code maintenance standards and the district construction permits with a revised 50% for approval from, from the board.
Yeah, one, one final comment with my California experience, paving is good, loses less water, should make Swift Mud happy.
President Gilpin, are we doing item C next month?
We, we already did, we talked, uh, about Dan.
You probably have an old-
Oh, I have an old one.
You have an old one, probably?
I have an old one, I have one.
Okay.
But yes, that'll be next month.
That will be next month?
Yeah.
But thank you for questioning me, because I, I've been known to skip. I need somebody watching me all the time. Staff reports, and we're going to start with Mr. Hurley, because he has a commitment.
We need to check petitions and communication.
That wasn't, that wasn't a petition.
Yeah, okay. That was, yeah, that was, okay, go.
Uh, watch orders, um, we had 260 last month.
Use your mic, please.
We had 260 watch orders, we had, um, 215 warning notices sent out, we also, um, as you all know, we've had trouble with, um, uh, the pigs, so we did hire, or, uh, we brought in another trapper, uh, we, we'll be setting traps out, and, um, we've caught about four or five over the last week, but there, there's a lot more than four or five out there. Um, I was talking to, to one of my trappers, and they said they're, that, that, um, each, each pig could do, uh, have 25 pigs a year, so if, that's a lot of pigs. Uh, we've been, uh, we've been putting patrols out at night to, uh, with security and extra staff to chase them off the course, I don't know, I, I mean, it's working in some areas, but not everywhere, um, but I know that's been a problem lately on the pigs, so I just want to let you know on that there.
Have, have we looked further into my suggestion a few months ago about getting crossbows and, and killing them rather than trying to trap them?
Yes, and we're not supposed to be hunting there, um, uh, in Sunning Lake, so unless we change, change what we do, we are not supposed to be doing it, but-
I, I understand the concern about firearms-
Yeah.
But a crossbow shouldn't be as fingered.
I talked to, talked to one of our trappers, and, um, uh, he's going to check with the state to see if that's actually, you know, we could do something like that also, um, and I think we're going to, and I hate to say it, because I know there's people that, we may have to go to that.
I, I think we should.
So, you know.
When they're digging up like on deer number seven with a new construction-
Well, Earl calls me every day, you know, but-
Yeah, I know, it's new construction, you're going to start doing bow and arrow with his 25 feet is-
Well, that's where we'll be putting the traps, and we're also going to be baiting them also. You bait them with corn, corn and beer and, uh, water, and I guess it's a formula, and that's how we're going to be baiting them for, so, um, and we actually started that two nights ago, so, uh, hopefully I can report to you within a week or two to see how that's working out too, but, I mean, like Neil said, we may have to go to something a little more drastic, but, um, let's try the traps, we just purch, purchased a couple of traps for Sunning Lakes, um, so let's see if they work, you know, and-
Well, traps are at work, we heard.
Well, we put the traps out the last couple nights, and we're baiting them, so, in, in the trap, so, um, I did talk to-
It started on the course like four, three or four weeks ago. I mean, I think-
Well, we have to go, yeah, yeah.
We got to roll one by ten.
But I've talked to, um, a couple of golf courses, uh, David Velt, he's having a hell of a time with them up there.
I'm not sa-
You know, so, I mean, it's just, just not us, um, you know, Earl's been working on it, you know, and, and give us another week or two with the traps, and with, with, uh, with the extra staff at night, and we are, chase them, and they say if you keep harassing them, they'll, they'll move further back, um, uh, towards the preserve back there, so-
I have to, Earl, are they only on deer, is it, is that the only problem, or have they gone to turtles somehow?
No, they're not a turtle, we don't, we don't allow them in, in the preserve in our area.
Currently, they are only on deer run, and they primarily, as of late, have been on holes one and nine, they were back on 15 two nights ago, but I, I agree with, everybody's a thing, all hands on deck, whatever it is that we have to do, we need to do it, because they are- hands on deck, whatever it is that we have to do, we need to do it, because they are, it's like a war zone if you ride around deer run, and every night it seems to get worse. So that's why Mike set up, I call yelling at them every, every morning that we found new stuff, but whatever we can do, whatever the state allows us to do, I would say let's do whatever we have to do, because it's got to be cheaper than re-sprigging all these areas.
So that's, so that's where I was at. So give us another week once we bait them, you know.
I would start checking into other old turtles, just in case. I don't think it's going to work.
Oh, give us a chance, okay?
Well, I just think, my two cents is, we need to maybe give you the two weeks.
Yeah.
And come up with something if it's not stopped, because it's, just a quick story, somebody, I was walking my new puppy, guy drove up in the cart and said, Mike, and I looked at him, I said, hi. I didn't know him from nobody. He said, have you been golfing lately? And I said, no, I, I didn't join this year. And he goes, you wouldn't believe hole number nine.
Yeah.
And I said, I said, well, I, I've seen pictures, because I said, I'm a supervisor, and he said, oh, I know. So, I, I think it's a, it's a concern that's probably, thank God, I think for Earl's help that it's, they're only staying in the roughs because they're after a certain kind of weed.
Yeah.
But when I have somebody stop me that I don't know, I've never met in my life.
We also had the other side too, Mike, that we had a woman come out at 10 o'clock at night when we were out there, and I was actually there and said, you weren't killing these, are you?
Yeah.
You know, and at, at the time I wasn't, so like.
Yeah, well, I just think, I just wanted to say.
Yeah.
It's something serious that we need to, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we'll give you the two weeks that you want, but we need to have a plan to, to get it taken care of if it don't work.
All right, yep, I will.
Okay, is that up, Mike?
Yeah, that's one more thing for Mike. Thank you for the sod.
Yes, we finally got it in, sods, sod, the reason why it took so long, there's so much building going on and stuff, and they have a hard time getting it, but they should finish it up hopefully today. And then we're going to put a couple sidewalks in across the areas, so we're not always blocking in the grass, you know, but as soon as they get that, you know, throughout where exactly where we are, we're going to be doing that too. And I think that's it. We put a couple fences up by a ditch, and I'd be getting a lot of questions on that, you know, so we have, you know, to be a little safer, that's all.
One other question, how's the smell coming on the?
Um, we actually, on the Tansas, we ordered the filters and stuff, the charcoal came in yesterday, and we, they should be installed by next week, everything should be done.
Okay, so we haven't done it yet?
We're, no, no, no.
Oh, I.
No, we ordered everything, and everything's in, so it should be next week. It's funny because I haven't had one complaint since the last meeting.
That's because you ordered it.
I don't know, probably, yeah.
So that's, that's it, that's it.
Are they starting on the roof this week?
Uh, next week.
Next week?
Next week, but the materials in, so we should be starting that next week. It should take a week. Hopefully, and I'll miss all the rain and everything, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next?
Good morning, supervisors. We'll start off with, with maintenance. Some of this stuff you've, you've already heard, but both courses have been fertilized while the wall, I've told you that a couple times in my reports. Same thing with the, the annual mulk cricket application, applications been done on both courses. An update on, we've planted several trees on number seven deer on the left side and around behind the green. Update on the, we've, we've removed the tree on hole number 16 deer, and as well as the dead pine trees on 17 deer. Those areas are, all the wood's been removed, and we will continue to clean those areas up. The maintenance staff has a little extra work this week with the AJGA and the minor league golf tour. They have a little extra setup needs that they're required to do to make those tournaments run smoothly, so we'll be doing a little bit of that. And also an update on the drainage on the right side of number nine deer, that should start this week, so you should see that out there. And I think we've talked about the hog damage extensively. Just note on the hog damage, we will start to clean those areas up once the situation is under control, as we started to clean up some areas, and then they came and tore it right back up the next day, so it's kind of a waste of resources until the problem's at bay, and then we'll go in and clean it up. And most likely, some of those larger areas will need to be sprigged, I think that's Earl's opinion on that. Moving on to membership, I haven't updated you in a couple of months, but I just want to let you know, we're current, we're roughly at about 987,000 of the $1,040,000 budget, or 95%. We're just about to start our summer membership drive, so we should continue to approach our goal there. Just a quick update on the 50% off, there hasn't been a lot of expiring ones in the last couple of months, but just to note where we are, we've had 45 expire since September, or since October, and 26 have rejoined as full members, so that's a 58% retention rate, so we're still running well above our goal. Moving on to the restaurant, next Saturday, not this, not tomorrow, but next Saturday is our Kokomo event, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but that's an event, we obviously didn't have it last year, but we've had it several years in the past in a row. Normally, that's a very large event that we close the entire building to have, as they normally have 220-plus people. Being still in the COVID sense, you know, over the last month or so, we were not expecting to have to close the full building for this event, but as things have changed, their attendance is actually starting to rise, and I haven't got the most recent update yet, but I will reach out to them today, again, today, so we can make a decision on where they're at as far as do we need to close the restaurant to take care of their entire group. Obviously, I'm running that on, at the space for people, but also as, as a revenue source, does it make sense for us to not do our Saturday a la carte dinner and do this event? And they're very, very close to making that decision easy for me, so it will be, when we make that decision later today, it will be based on, again, availability of room for their folks, but it will be a, a good business decision for us, so we will not be going, we will most likely double our average revenue on a Saturday night to host this event, so. Just want to let you know that that might happen, and that decision will probably be made today, so everybody can have notice of that. Also, as, as, you know, we've talked about, you know, we're going to discuss some capital stuff. As we know, we've kind of suspended our capital plan for this year, but I would like the board's permission to move on the banquet room upgrades. I, I want to kind of update the room a little bit to make the banquet room look a little nicer. We're getting into the period of time where we, we're going to need to sort of showcase the banquet room so we can sell future weddings. You know, we're, we're probably always looking close to a year ahead on those things, so although we're not doing a ton of banquets now, I want it to look appropriate so we can sell future banquets, maybe even fall banquets. So if anybody has any comment on that, I'd like your opinion if I have that permission.
You're moving?
This is in, this.
Stop.
No, this is in this year's capital budget that we suspended. It was, it was due, it was due to be spent this year, but we suspended our capital expenditure, so I want permission to move forward on that.
Oh. I personally would like to see everything that you want to spend, because I think there's more than this, is there not? I know there's a tree.
In this, in this fiscal year?
There's a tree thing going around.
Well, we'll discuss that.
Well, that's money you want to spend this year.
Um, yes, and we can discuss that separately, if you'd like, I'm, I'm sure we can, we'll get Earl involved.
So all the monies that you want to spend this year has a com, one conversation, I don't, why would you split it?
Uh, that's fine, let me, we'll, we'll circle back, we'll come back to that one. And we can do that. As, as I've stated several times, the AJGA event, their practice round is today, they'll have their tournament round tomorrow and Sunday, they have about 78 players. This is, this is a showcase event for them, so all 78 of those players have not played in an AJGA event before, except I did hear that possibly due to COVID, maybe one or two of them have actually played in one event before, and they allowed them to play in this, so if you get a chance this weekend, you ought to watch them, because these kids are pretty good. It's a first-class event, as, as you can go around, you can see they're, they're running a first-class operation. The AJGA is, is the spectacle of junior golf, so. Also, Monday through Wednesday, we got the minor league golf tour that I've brought up before, they have 60 players, doesn't really impede anything we do on a daily basis, it's just like a large group coming in. Something new to note, this is, this is new, every November, we typically host the Advent Health Gala Golf Tournament. They're kind of changing things up a little bit, and they're, they're going to replace that with a celebrity golf tournament, which would be like a celebrity AM, I guess. They've worked with some, some local folks who have ties to a lot of celebrities, and it's really, really new, so we don't have all the details yet. I'll forward, forward that to the board as I know more, but sounds rather interesting, so we might have some, some celebrity faces here in, in November, so it's, thought that was kind of exciting. I want to bring up the driving range again. Last meeting, we discussed, you know, we put some sign up, signage on the driving range to try to reduce the amount of balls that are going through the back of the range into the maintenance area, and I'm not sure it really had any effect, so at this time, I'd want to recommend to the board that we use limited-flight range balls, so unless you have opinion to not do it, I will probably move forward with that. I just want to make sure the board's okay with that.
I would just comment on that, I've, I've had mixed feelings on limited-range, limited-flight balls for a long time, and I was actually doing some research for an article I was writing on Alastair McKenzie, the golf course architect of Augusta National, among others. Back in the 30s, he was actually promoting the concept of reduced-flight golf balls. So if it's okay with McKenzie, I'm okay with it.
I, I just don't think we have a choice.
Yeah, well.
I mean, it's, it's not even.
I think so, but on that point, I think less people will be taking driving range balls to play on the course.
Because I, we don't want to put up a $30,000 net.
Correct.
We don't want, I mean, it's, we don't have a choice, and people don't like it, they don't have to come to our driving range to use it, that's all.
Yeah, we've estimated that the initial cost to do this is going to be in the $5,000 to $6,000 range, plus, you know, we always do supplemental range balls every year or so, in the $2,000 range, so, as opposed to cost of all the other stuff, it's the easiest, most efficient answer.
Just, just because you threw that number out, and because my mind is saying, okay, golf is always argued if it's $5,000, it's a capital expense, this is an operations expense, correct?
Yes, we do have, we don't have that much in our budget, we do have $2,000 left in our budget, which we have at the end of the year every year, so we do have some budget there, so either A, I'll work with Dan, or we'll just be over budget on that item.
Okay, well, I, I did want to say that I looked at the golf numbers, and I appreciate that even though revenue is down a little bit, you've been doing a good job of offsetting that with savings and expense, so.
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with this being a little bit over to solve the bigger problem.
All right, we'll move on. Supplemental carts are those white carts that are scheduled to return April 15th, they might not leave on that date, they're going to come pick them up when it's convenient for them, but our lease will end on the 15th. So with that being said, we obviously have 20 less carts available. I, I know I bring it up every meeting, but I, I think we should have some criteria to go back to two riders and a cart. I'm open to whatever criteria the board might like or not like, or if we just set a date, then we want to try to ensue that. I don't think we're going to have any problems running out of carts right now, because I think people are starting on their own to ride with people again, but I can't guarantee that it won't happen, so I just want to have some sort of a game plan as to when we want to dictate two riders and a cart. Does anybody have any, and we don't have to decide that right now, I just think we should think about it.
With the 15th, makes sense? If we're going to lose 20 cart?
I mean, yes, it, it would, but we could, I mean, we could go May 1. Mostly, I want people to feel comfortable with that, I think most, I don't know what the actual numbers are, but there's a very large number of our members that are vaccinated, and probably not all of them, but, and we don't have to go 100% mandatory, I mean, we could start urging them very hard to do that, and if somebody says, hey, I'm not vaccinated, I'm not comfortable, I'm okay making an allowance, I just, I don't want to get in a situation where we run out of carts. And also, we also, we need to kind of protect our golf course, too.
In the summertime, is it really an issue, running out of carts?
When we get into the dead of summer, it's not, we will not run out of carts, I don't, I don't believe, unless there was a weird situation, but we also do want to limit the traffic on the golf course, too.
I understand that, but.
On the course.
I mean, we just had one of our employees that has.
Been exposed.
Been exposed.
And that is correct.
Still dictating, I don't like that word.
Right.
How about urging?
Which we can do, and, and like I said, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, I mean, I just want to have a game plan to, going forward, what is our criteria? Do we have a criteria, or do we just say, hey, May 1? And I'm fine with whoever, I just think we need a plan.
Why don't you just say July 1st, and call, you know, when the president says you're, you're able to have barbecues or whatever.
President!
I mean, he's, he can have barbecues and stuff on July 1st, meet with people, let's do it then, in celebration of that day.
I, I prefer taking our leadership from our governor than our president, but.
That certainly. He was talking about President Gilpin.
I mean, most, when the northerners go, you can probably do it. So if you think the northerners are all gone by May 1, then I think it's fine, because all the locals, I think we can live with each other. Is that correct? I'm, you're right? I mean, the groups.
I can say May 1, I won't, it won't.
Somebody has an opinion.
Yeah, and like I said, it doesn't have to be 100% mandatory, but we can just, I'll, basically, I'll put it out in newsletters and, and other subsequent materials, that May 1's the date.
Surely by the fall, we should make them in.
We're not being ridiculous, we're talking fall.
All right, I know that's been going on for a while, so I do have a couple more things. The summer league starts April 20th and runs about 20 weeks, so April 20th, we will have Tuesday night summer league, and that's actually a time where I actually go out and play, so. I don't even know where my golf clubs are, but, all right, so I had next on here, was to talk about the tree plan, so Earl, do you want to kind of come up and join us for the tree plan, and, and/or we can talk the banquet room, capital too, and that's.
Well, capital, capital, what? Capital, we talk later, right? Can we do capital at the end?
Hey, Mike.
Then.
I got one more thing, I got to talk to.
Go ahead.
Drew, can you come up? Let's go on the water, we do. Um, I want to, it was my fault, I'm, I'm getting like Mike, I'm missing something, so, one item that I missed, I want to talk about the valves in the water plant real quick, because I got to get going, I got doctor's appointment, but I want Drew to talk of, to let you guys know what's going on here.
Okay.
Okay, what happened a couple weeks ago, we had another.
Are you getting closer to your mic, Mike?
Oh, sorry. Couple weeks ago, we had another problem with the water, and we all know that, and Dan and I probably have been shot at 100 times on it, and I apologize for that. But, so when we had the water plant that night, because we had such a big change in, in our manager or our, our guys that work at the water plant sewer, over the last couple of years, I think something's got dropped. Well, when I was there, we realized that there are a lot of valves and, and things that were opening and closing, so I called Drew on, on Monday morning, and Drew and I went through the whole plan, and I found a lot of things that we should fix right away. And I, so I asked Drew to come to the meeting today and, and to explain what we're doing there, so you guys know what's going on, so.
When the, when the plant went down the last time, like Mike said, we found a number of valves that you can't close. Unfortunately, the valves that we can't close. of valves that you can't close. Unfortunately, the valves that we can't close that we need to replace, one of them's on the intake side, on one end of the plant, and the other one's on the pressure side, on the opposite end of the plant. So the plant was designed, you could isolate it pretty much in half. So if one pump went down, or half the pumps went down, excuse me, you could close the valves and still keep going. Well, in this case, they're at the opposite end of the plant, so we can't close it down without shutting the whole plant down. So we're going to be shutting it down anyway to repair it. A lot of them were done in '78, I think, when the plant was either originally constructed or somewhere when they did some work to the plant. So I think 1978 is old enough to justify replacement of all of them because they're almost all the same age, except for, I think, two valves and a check valve on one of the pumps we replaced, I think, a couple of months ago. So we're proposing a project to just go ahead and get it all done. I think our estimate on cost for the valves was between $20,000 and $30,000 for all the material. The valves are that old, a lot of the piping, gaskets are that old. So the contractor recommended because we already had contact with KDL and I don't know if they've, have we talked to anybody else, any other contractors or just...
Well, we call them, but I mean, they can get here the quickest, too. And we work with them a lot, so.
Yeah. When we met with them at the plant to help us order all the materials. So we're going to buy some extra pipe in case they get it down and we find we need to replace a segment of pipe. Because we don't want to find that information out halfway through while the plant's down. Because we don't want to run on the interconnect. Because we'll have to shut it down around the interconnect until it's done. That's going to be a number of hours. We're going to focus on getting half the plant finished and turn back on, and then they can continue on with it. But we want to, we want to get this done so it doesn't become a problem in the future. And while we have everything down, we want to just go ahead and update everything we can and get it to the point where we can run on half the plant if we have to go down for any reason.
So when we take the plant down, does that mean we're going to lose water supply again to the...
No, the intent is to, we've got to coordinate with Avon Park and we're going to open the interconnect before we shut anything down, make sure it's able, and we'll close the valves. We're going to, we can isolate the plant, but we can't isolate portions of the plant. That's the issue with all this. So we'll close the valves, make sure everything's still working before we take anything else down, before we shut anything off. So it's, it's going to be very, very well sequenced and planned out before we just start cutting stuff off. Because we don't want this, we never want it to happen anyways. But we don't want this to be the cause of any future interruptions, especially anything that we can isolate and find out about now. Just get it done.
Michael, I guess there's a lot of things that are being addressed, and rightfully so. Can somebody create a summary sheet of everything that's being done and the cost?
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, we want you to do it.
No, no, no. That's all we're... No. And that's why we're doing all this. We want, listen, the last thing I ever want to see is a boil water notice again. You know, I mean, I'm, you know...
I understand.
And I mean, I got murdered by people I don't even know. And so I'm not used to that. But, you know, we want to fix it. We want to stop saying next year, next year, next year. So that's why I called Drew and Drew and I spent the last three days together. And, you know, we're trying to bring everything up to date so it doesn't happen again. You know, it's not fair to residents and everything, so we want to get it done right.
Just put something up there.
And we will do that. You know, and I want to say one thing with Dan. When I go to him and Drew and I go to him, he jumped right on it. And I love that. I mean, you know, let's get it done. So I want to thank Drew, too, because I mean, he's, he's going to spend the time with me. And I know that's not the easiest thing to do for three days.
Hey, thank you, Drew.
You're welcome.
I think Ray's right, though. If you could put something together, so we at least, every day, I'm hearing Dan saying, we got to do this. We got, I mean, we all agree that it's got to be done, but we just, we've lost control.
It'll be a good document for now, as well as for future review of when we've done what and what we need to do going forward, ongoing maintenance. The deferred maintenance is how we got into this problem.
Right, exactly. And that's exactly what we talked to Joey about. You know, he's going to come up with a form where we know they're being checked, you know, every three months, everything's being done where it's supposed to be. And, you know, so, all right. Thank you. I have to...
Thanks, Mike. Okay, Mr. Lemire, sorry we interrupted you, but you can go ahead.
No worries. We'll have Earl, you've seen, most of you have run around with Earl to go over the tee plan. I was reading the minutes from the last meeting and it was requested that we bring to the board a plan for the trees. So Earl has put that together. And I know some of you have run around with him. And I'll let him kind of brief everybody one more time on that tree plan.
So I wasn't at the last board meeting, but I know there was a concern on trees and how we come about bringing those to the board or when we decide they're ready to go. So Mr. Steagle asked me to put something together that kind of gave a breakdown of, last summer, we had went through and done some extensive pruning on primarily deer run. So we really kind of looked into the health of water oaks specifically. And we had several on a list that we knew we needed to kind of keep our eyes on over the next few years. At that time, we weren't ready to necessarily come and say, this one needs to come out or that one. It became apparent that the one on 16, we felt like it was becoming unsafe for golfers and for our staff. So we had asked for that one to come down. I revisited what we had done last summer, came up with a list of pretty much all the water oaks that we feel have any age to them. Water oaks last about 75 years. They are prone to splitting in the middle. Once the centers start dying out and you see a lot of dead wood throughout the tree. We cleaned a lot of dead wood out of trees last summer. But this list that we put together is basically just what we see based on what we have right now. There's only two trees on this list that I would say are critical that I would recommend come out this summer, summer of 2021. That's the water oak left of number two, Green, and the water oak behind number four, Green. There's a couple of reasons for that. Both of those trees are probably over 75 years old. They are, have extensive dead wood. The center on the one on number four is completely dead. We cleaned a ton of it out last summer and it's already dying back out again. Those two trees, because of their location and proximity to the green, people play golf right in there and they also, especially the one on number two on the left, everybody guards against hitting into that bunker on the right and they wind up on the left-hand side of the green. And the greens also sloped away. So if you hit a ball on the left side, it kicks you left up under the tree. So because of people playing golf and also parking under those trees for shade, it's, to me, a very hazardous situation. So those are the only two that we are saying absolutely should come out this summer. To remove those and also plant grade A, minimum 14-foot live oaks in their place, it's a cost of about $3,000. I know Mr. Steagle asked me, hey, if we were to look at this as a whole and just to get everything behind us and take care of what's on the list, what would it be? I gave him a number of $20,000, which included the removal as well as replanting. We were requesting to remove, I think, 11 trees in total, and we were going to plant 20, all those being live oak trees. Similar to the ones that we just recently planted on the left-hand side of seven, those are over 14 feet. They're single-stem cathedral live oaks that came from a local nursery. So there's no, you know, shocking or having to get them acclimated to this climate. They come out of the same type of sugar sand that we have. So that's kind of where the list came about. Again, it's a, we could do it over a five-year period. We could do it over, you know, however the board would like to execute it. I'm simply trying to give the info of here are the trees that we have on our list that we need to be aware of. The two that I've referenced are two that I would recommend strongly taken care of in this year. And however we accomplish the rest is up to the, up to the board.
Well, you go ahead, Ray.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, in my, in my drive-through with Earl, we talked a lot about it. And again, in my experiences with a 100-year-old course, we've got a 50-year-old course, the one thing they have in common is they're living things. They change, they, what's there has to be replaced periodically. Trees grow and die, grass grows and dies. It's all, it's all life. And my suggestion would be that we address the two trees that are emergency and add, going forward, and as part of golf operations, a tree program ongoing for removal and replacement of trees as part of the ongoing operation of the golf course. It's just something that has to be done in the life of a golf course.
Well, I agree with the second part. I'd spend the money now and get it over with $20,000. But I agree with Neil for sure. And you've done this before. You gave us a three-year plan on trees three or four years ago.
That was primarily for the pruning of trees and for the removal of the dead ponds.
I mean, to Neil's point, you should be able to come up with a ballpark estimate and put it into your expense budget. It's not capital. You know, whether it's $20,000, whatever you guys decide is the right number, and then have at it. The only thing we, I'm sure Mike would tell you, is if you're going to take down trees, we want to be made aware of it. But you'll have the money in the account. And we won't have to have, you know, you won't have to come begging for more money. What we should try to avoid.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah, we're comfortable with that.
And then the other thing I would suggest, since we have the golf committee to do fact-finding, use the golf committee to fact-find if there are any particular trees that they want to be sure get saved or replaced in kind, identify them so that Mike and the board knows. But I, to my way of thinking, there are, there are certainly trees that have an impact on the strategy of how to play the golf hole. That's important. But the particular tree that is blocking that strategy, it's a tree. It's going to live, it's going to die. And at some point, it needs to be replaced. And we need to replace them when there's a occurrence of safety or any concerns of it.
The one thing I would ask the board, I know you've had this list. I don't know if you've really went through it kind of tree by tree. But if there are any trees on that list, to your point, we can go through it as well, golf committee. But if there are any trees on that list that you specifically would have a question or an issue or would like to talk about, please let me know so that we can kind of go through that before we get to a point of putting a ribbon on it. And that's usually, we try to ribbon them a month or so ahead of removal, just so that anybody who might have an issue with it could bring it to us before. Because obviously, once we put a chainsaw to it, it's impossible to go back from it. So we've, I've ridden extensively with Mr. Steagle and we've kind of talked through each one and, you know, how it might be key to the hole. I know one tree that's on here that I would put a note on that right now is healthy. It is not aesthetically pleasing, but it is a fairly healthy tree. I did extensive deadwood-ing on it last summer is the tree on number 12, Deer. That is, some people would call it key to the strategy of that hole. Some people would tell you to cut it down tomorrow. In our plan for that, which is one on the list to look at over the years and kind of evaluate, when it comes out, I would not recommend planting a live oak back in the exact spot that that tree is located. I would locate it a little bit to the right of that hole. There's, the way that hole plays, it, I don't think the architect would have ever intended for that tree to be where it is in the hole and the strategy of how to play that hole. So just if you get a chance, please take a look at that. We will come up with a plan of execution and budgeting that will take care of this as we go. And I appreciate the time from all the supervisors that have looked through it and went through it. I feel like everybody probably knows a lot more about trees than they need to right now, but...
Well, I, I think you're wrong there because you're, if we can't rely and trust you, I don't think there's any committee here that would, should question, I mean, that. I mean, we all have our preferences. We all are, some of us are tree huggers, some aren't. But if they have to come out, they have to come out. No ifs, ands, buts about it. So entertaining other people getting involved is, to me, just, I will trust you. I know you're not going to take something down just because you want to take it down. But to me, I'll do what you recommend.
I'll help you take the one down.
Easy enough.
I mean, to me, when I used to play golf, that crappy-ass tree on 10 at the corner is, for those of us who can't get around it, it should come down today.
Everybody has their favorite tree.
But I think you just, you know, I guess we have to okay it. But in my mind, you come up with what, I liked your proposal. It's okay with me. I don't know if we have to get anybody else involved in it. You're the one that's, if we can't trust you, then we don't need you here.
I'm fine with that. And I'm happy to communicate with Mr. Steagle at a high level, who can in turn communicate with you as to when we'll execute those on two and four and replant and our plan moving forward on that.
While you're here, where are we on the short game? Anybody?
Did we put that into the board packet at all? Or, okay. I think we were going to do that next...
It's in the budget for this summer.
I know.
So we do have a plan that I think we were going to present and talk about at the next board meeting. We were trying to not overwhelm what was going on. But we do have a plan for that to get it taken care of this summer, so.
We'll see you next month.
Yeah, I think probably what I would recommend is that you guys come, spend some time with Earl and let him really show you what he's got on paper. So that way you can understand it better. So we'll try to set that up.
I prefer to see it first and then...
Right.
I can, I can actually email that to you and have it distributed this afternoon, actually. So, and same that we did with the tee program and the trees. If, like, once you get that document, if you have questions and you want to walk the area and look at it, I'm happy to do that.
Do we have to do an RFP on that, don't we?
No.
I thought it's $35,000.
He's going to do it in-house. That's just his cost.
We're proposing to do that in-house. So it's just materials.
In your own budget?
Yeah. And it, the, what, the plan you, you get explains in detail what we would do with the existing green and bunker that's located next to the range, as well as what we would do with the new area, where it would be, where parking would be for it. So...
Okay, I'll wait and see. That's fine.
All right, thank you. So I guess, I know we need to get into our capital plan for next year here at some point. But moving back on this fiscal year, I just want to make sure you know that the banquet room upgrade has already been approved to be spent in this fiscal year. So it's not a budget discussion. It's just the board had recommended that we freeze capital expenditures until we knew how we were doing financially. So that's what I'm asking you about for the banquet room. I'm asking the board's permission to unfreeze that and execute that. We had $40,000 in the budget. We spent over $10 for some outside furniture, so I have about $30 left.
So you're asking for what, 30?
That's what, that's what I have left in the budget, yeah.
And 30 is going to buy what?
Well, we need some, we need some new chairs. We need some, a few new tables. I want to do some, you know, I was working with the interior designer that recommended some curtains with some uplighting. Just to kind of jazz that room up a little bit, if you go in there, it's just, there's, there's no, this is blah. So I don't know if we can fit it into the budget, but there was, there was, we discussed, me and the interior designer discussed changing out the chandeliers in there. I don't know if we'll be able to do that. But, and there's a few other things that we can do in there to make it a little more appealing to sell to, say, a wedding or some other function.
My, my suggestion would be, I'm not, I'm not opposed to unfreezing that budget, but work with the interior designer. Bring us back a list of what you want to spend the money on. Say your budget's $30,000, but put some options as to what you think really your budget's $30,000, but put some options as to what you think really should be done. If it's over $30,000, we can look at it. But give us a specific of what you want to spend that capital on, and we can address it at the next meeting.
All right, sounds good. That's all I have.
I got a couple things. Did you order those umbrellas?
Yes. They're probably a couple weeks out. They were...
Because you know, this whole thing backfired. Everybody moved the tables, all the concrete to the grass.
Yeah, I knew we would have something. But yes, we did. We did order a couple. I'm not sure if they've shipped yet, but we did order them two weeks ago, I think it was.
They were probably backed up in the sewer.
Everything's backed up, yeah. That's probably correct, too, so.
At that point, you'll move everything back.
We'll put it back, and we'll put a couple umbrellas up to see how they work.
Yeah, and in the future, don't let people move those tables. I mean, that... If it's... We don't have shade, we don't have shade. But you can't... How the next thing you're going to do is see them over there by number one on Deer because of shade.
Yeah, we'll put them back.
I don't know how you...
I would think you need the umbrellas before you tell them they can't.
I don't know how you stop them, but we've ordered two umbrellas. And the thing you have to know is that the tables that were ordered do not have a hole in the middle for an umbrella to go in. So we had to order umbrellas that were crooked, for lack of a better word. So we only ordered two to make sure that we were going to be able to use them, and then we'll order them for next year, because by the time those get here, it's going to be too hot to sit out there anyway, so we'll see.
Yeah. We passed the two months of the year that they're going to use them already.
Yeah, so we ordered two. They should be here. It was, what, four months out? Probably four weeks out.
Four, I think it was four, yeah. So it should be a couple weeks.
And then, one other thing, on this Trune Rewards program that I see on Facebook...
Yeah.
Can we... Have we gotten that message out via any other communicate... I mean, any other, whatever you call it?
That... And Brian might be able to help me on that. I don't believe the program, as far as us, is it May 1, when we roll live with our Trune Rewards Trune card? Is that correct? April 1?
It seems to be very confusing. Is there a way to simplify and tell everybody what's going on?
Yeah, no, the answer... It is. It can be confusing. I had to sit through several different things to fully understand it myself. I do have some literature, and we can start to bring all that out, especially, it's probably going to be a little more beneficial to public. There will be some benefits to any of our members that spend a lot of money on clubs or things like that. Membership dues are not eligible to be used on your Trune Rewards card. But there's also a Trune... The Trune card itself that you could use to play other Trune facilities as well. So there's actually two different things going on there. And yes, it can be confusing. I just would direct people to truncard.com, which we can start doing as well. But yes, we will get some more information out there.
Is there a free reciprocal program? Because we're part of Trune, or not?
Being discussed.
Oh, it's still being discussed? Okay.
Golf projects pushed, put things together. I would not take anything more out of this year. It will roll out, so probably Paul or Taylor.
Okay. So maybe down the road, it'll be... Right now, there's nothing. Because I think some people have asked.
Yeah.
You know, can we play in?
I may.
Okay.
I need that stuff.
And again, the clarification would be that they gave us was that we're still operated by Indigo. Indigo is owned by Trune, but they're still working out their partnership.
Yep. I'm all set, Dan, if you got more reports. I'm done.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Okay. General Counsel report.
I don't have a lot. There's not been a lot of motion on the current litigation. I do expect to have a update on the Avanti water meter thing by the... For the 23rd meeting, I'm actually expecting a call from Mr. Locconi this afternoon. Bigger issue, as Mr. Hoteling pointed out, the last board meeting, the golf committee, it is... It was decided to be a fact-finding committee, which means it is not a Sunshine Committee, but with Mrs. Phillips coming on, I know we have concerns about Sunshine law applicability for the golf committee. So I did some research, and unfortunately, the only way to guarantee we are compliant is to... Would be to make the golf committee a Sunshine Committee. But as stated at the previous board meeting, we discussed that, and that's not what was desired. We were going to make it a non-Sunshine Committee. So if the board is not willing to make the golf committee a Sunshine Committee, then my recommendation would be that no supervisor act as a member of the golf committee because of Sunshine law concerns. So...
We've had a supervisor on the golf committee for three or four years, and it was okay.
Correct. We've had one... We've had one supervisor, is my understanding, and...
So if we went down to one supervisor, would that not be okay?
It would technically be okay, but that... The concern that is then raised is who is then allowed to attend those meetings. So if another supervisor were to attend that meeting, now we have a concern as far as Sunshine law goes. So...
We had in the past, had a president present at a meeting along when there was a supervisor there.
Correct. And what I'm saying is, just because someone else is present, doesn't mean that there is a violation. Just the risk of violation goes up substantially. So my job as the attorney is to limit risk as much as possible. So my recommendation is, is if we do not... The simple solution is to make it a Sunshine Committee. If we make it a Sunshine Committee, then everything is fine. If we... Or if that's not something the board is willing to entertain, then my recommendation is that no supervisor sit on the golf committee. So...
Why are you changing your tune from two years ago when you went with us?
I'm not changing my tune, but in the past, it was asked, is it illegal, or is it a violation for a supervisor to sit on the golf committee? It is not. And just because I'm... What I'm saying is, is if the risk for violation goes up if a supervisor is on the golf committee. And like I say, if no other supervisor shows up, then we're fine. But if another supervisor wants to attend the golf committee meeting, and there is a sitting supervisor on the golf committee, it drastically limits what that supervisor may be able to say at a golf committee meeting.
As a guest, you can't say anything.
No, no. Well, the guest... I mean, what I'm saying is, if a supervisor is in the audience, and another supervisor is on the committee, the supervisor that's on the committee, just by speaking, runs the risk of violating the Sunshine law. And so, this is... It's a very simple solution. If supervisors want to sit on the golf committee, make it a Sunshine Committee. My job is to assess risk. That's my assessment.
Or I can just resign from the golf committee, and that will limit the risk, limit...
Correct. Correct. Well, absolutely... Under no circumstances can two supervisors sit on the committee.
Yeah, you can't. You can't be on there regardless. So you or Ray would have to go without question.
Okay, I will.
Beverly, I can tell you, when Dan was... Got on the board and when I got on the board, we were asked, and we were told that it's not illegal, that we shouldn't sit on that board, that golf committee board.
All right.
But Ray chose to stay on, and that's... It wasn't illegal. So that's where we are.
Okay. Bob, I'm resigning from the golf committee. I'm sorry.
What?
But nothing has changed. When I got on the board, I was asked not to go on the golf committee, because I was scheduled to go on it the next week. I didn't... You know, maybe I should have got on it, because Ray'd come in right after me, and then there wouldn't have been a problem. But in my estimation, and it hasn't been taken care of by the existing board of golf committee, there should be no supervisor on that board. But that, again, is my opinion.
Or alternatively, make it a Sunshine Committee.
Or make it a Sunshine, yeah.
Well...
And if we make it a Sunshine Committee, that raises its ability from fact-finding only to advisory. So that's another potential bonus or detriment, depending on how you see it.
I... You know, I'm just confused, that's all. It wasn't a problem for three years, now all of a sudden it's a problem. I got another problem. I like to know... I was asked to resign from the golf committee. And I said, why do you want me to resign from the golf committee? And the head of the golf committee said, because Mike Gilpin told me to tell you that.
Well, I didn't tell him to tell that. I probably told him that...
Be careful, he's right here.
I know, but...
Be careful.
I'm careful. I mean, it's my word against his.
Yeah.
But I had to get off, or it was recommended. I'm not saying...
Let me finish my conversation.
You can do what you want to do, Ray. You don't have to get off.
Let me finish my conversation.
Okay.
So he said... I said, he wants me off? He says, yeah, he wants me off. He said, he doesn't think it's right for me to be on the board and be on the golf committee. And he said also that, I'm sure the other board members feel the same way, but they won't admit it. And I said, oh. I said, what else did he say? He's kind of inferred that he has the right of who is in charge of the golf committee, and that if Bob didn't do what he was kind of suggesting, that there might be a change at that level. That's from you. So I'm curious, what's going on?
Well, it's still the same. You should not be on the golf committee, but it is up to you.
No, no, no.
It is up to you whether you stay on it.
Michael, why are you going back? We talked about the golf committee charter, and everybody signed off on it.
Right.
With no changes. And then you pull this, and you go behind everybody's back and try to get me off the committee. I don't understand why.
I'm not going... I have said from day one that you should not be on it.
I've never...
And thank God, when Mark was showing up at those meetings, that nobody complained. That's all I'm saying. And you have every right not to have to resign. And I'll say that.
Would you explain your actions?
There's no action I have to. I have... From day... From day one...
There's no action?
From day one...
You think what you did was right?
Well, I didn't do anything.
You asked him to ask me to resign.
Gentlemen, can we move on?
Yes.
I'll take care of that outside.
What's that?
I agree.
Take care.
She wants to move on.
I'm not taking it outside.
Let's go. Let's move on, please.
Hey, he's running the board.
They really can't take care of it outside, because the item might become...
That's right.
Yes.
Let's just table it.
Well, Beverly, it can't be tabled. You're going to resign, and I respect you for that. The problem is that we have somebody that wants to stay on the board, and we have people on the board that want to keep him on there.
You know what?
Not board, but on the committee.
If you would have came to me and asked me, I probably would have resigned. But going behind my back and trying what you did and threatening Bob...
I didn't threaten Bob. I can do...
You told him that if he did... If changes might be made, that you have the authority to do so.
I do.
No, you don't.
I do.
If you read the charter, not you alone.
Okay, let's move on. I don't want to argue anymore.
I'm sorry, I'm not moving on.
We just heard from our attorney, his recommendation, so...
You know what?
That's it.
I think you're abusing your power.
Okay.
That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Dave.
I think you've got a lot of nerve.
General Manager's report.
We have a lot of stuff that's going on right now. As I've told you, we have the Florida Rural Water Association, which is difficult for me to say quickly. We are a member of that body, and as a member, we are able to request them to make a survey of our water and sewer needs, what our situation is, and they take our numbers and basically recommend to us what we need to do now and what we need to do for the future. That is, basically, that survey is then used, can be used, as a roadmap for where we need to go for the future. And we can use that to then go to the state and say we want to do whatever, a new sewer plant, a new water plant, whatever it might be, and use that to obtain financing, which is part of the SRF, State Fund, 20-year financing on, say, a sewer plant. So we are in the middle of doing that. I guess Drew's already gone, but he and Mike and Joey Sliva are doing our numbers now. Hopefully, we'll have something within the next six, eight weeks that we can then bring to the board and say, this is our recommendation of where we're going. I would note that our... All of our infrastructure is old. I don't know about you, but I don't feel as good as I did when I was 20. And it kind of starts going downhill after 50, so I'm there. And I think a lot of Sun and Lakes infrastructure is, too. So that's ongoing. The automated valve connection with the Avon Park interconnect, it has been ordered. It will be here supposedly within the next 30 days. Basically, that works as we are connected with Avon Park. That's our backup. When you put it in, it's one sensor on ours, one sensor on theirs, and this valve in between. When it senses our water pressure being low, it A calls us, B calls Avon Park, and then C opens the thing automatically. That would have prevented both of the last two boil-water notices. The boil-water notice is a result of the low-pressure event. So hopefully, that will not... I can't tell you we won't have any more. I can tell you it would have stopped both of those. The first one, Duke Power failed. We have a backup generator, but we didn't have a preventive maintenance program with the switch to the automatic switch, so it didn't trip in, so the generator didn't come on, so we got the boil water. We got low pressure. As it exists now, somebody has to go to the switch and open it. So this is basically second redundancy, if you will. The only way we should have them in the future is if there is a water main break somewhere. I mean, that's just... If that happens, you're just going to get one. But this should eliminate all of these relatively minor events. That is ordered, and it is on the way. And I've given each one of you guys a copy of the strategic plan. The senior people here have worked on that, and it basically looks at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats and opportunities. I would ask you to get back to me if you have any comments, anything that you think needs to be added or taken out or whatever. You kind of don't know where you're going until you know where you've been, and you don't know where you're going to... How you're going to get there until you know where you're going, so it's circular. Quick update on Unit 12. We have the tortoise survey on the second piece of property. It's more tortoises than there were on the first piece of property, so the remediation or the conservation that would be needed is more than the first one. It appears as we go further east, there's more tortoises, so it's going to be a difficult negotiation unless we're able to move the tortoises to some other property. And that is possible, depending on where it is. We have property out on Unit 20 that we're not using. The issue is with the county. We're trying to get clarification of, since this has been subdivided once, does that eliminate the slink... Skink, sorry, not slink, issue or not? If it's a large piece of property, it doesn't. If it's a whole bunch of little pieces of properties, it does. So we're trying to get straight. It's kind of hard to get hard numbers, but we're working on it. Once we get that, then we have to talk to Mr. Hornick and his people and see what kind of negotiation we can do. But until we get all this stuff put together, it's just kind of up in the air. I really don't want to lose the opportunity to sell in that property, but I can't just sign a blank check for Sun and Lake either, so we'll figure it out. Mike was talking about the valves in the water plant. I was over there yesterday, and we have three wells, one of which is the main well, which is sufficient to carry Sun and Lake, period. The other two are relatively smaller, and it takes both of them to kind of keep up. All of the pipes from the main well are laying on the ground. The impellers failed, which is the stuff that pumps it up, and it got pulled out to get fixed. I told them, just go ahead and fix it. So it's less than $10,000. Should be fixed in the next week. But until we get that fixed, we really... We have two wells, but it's almost like a well and a half, if you will, so we don't have a lot of backup. We definitely need that fixed, and we need it fixed sooner rather than later. We definitely need that fixed, and we need it fixed sooner rather than later. I talked to you at last meeting that we had had a DEP, Department of Environmental Protection audit of our Unit 23 sewer plant, which is the older one, the larger one and the older one. We have not gotten the report in writing. They have told us verbally what their issues were. The main one that they had was the, well, not the main one. The first one, the easiest one to fix, but that way, is to enlarge the berms around infiltration ponds, and that has been done. It has been taken care of, it's already in and sotted. Second piece of it is we have two infiltration wells, basically shallow wells to see, make sure that you're not polluting the groundwater. One of those has been hit by a long mora, the other just wasn't working right. So we got to figure out what the problem is with them, get that fixed, and then we have to put concrete around them so nobody else runs into them with a bush on. We're in the process of getting that priced out to see what that'll take. The third thing they identified was that there were some minor leaks in the containment wall. We have someone looking at that, and they're supposed to get a surprise on that as well. My goal is to have everything they identified done before they send us a written thing. And we are corresponding with the lady, the inspector who was here, as we fix things, so hopefully she understands that we're trying our best to cooperate. Other than that, I don't think we have anything going on.
Great. Dan, Ray asked Mike, Hurley, to summarize, you know, with some costs. Is that going to be in what you just talked about, or should we ask you? Because I know you've had to spend quite a bit of money since you got on here. Is that going to be in Mike's report, or should we have you do one, too? Just so we know what you've been-
We can do it together.
There's been a major amount of money spent.
Yeah, we can do it together.
Okay.
I get you one, one, two.
Okay, very good.
Some things you don't have any choice to do, but-
Oh, yeah, I don't think any of us here are going to question it, but it just, it's hard for me to keep track of-
Yeah.
The money Mike's spending, the money you're spending.
Yeah, a lot of this stuff is within the budgeted maintenance items, but some of it isn't, so yes, we can give you that, both what's budgeted, what fits within the budget, and what is in excess of the budget.
I think we'd all appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll have that for you.
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment? Is there any public comment?
Bill Nordkreis, public comment here. I'm happy to hear that you have some kind of tree program coming up because the icon, monument trees that are being cut down really changed the appearance and the aesthetics of the course. You want to cut down a tree on two, five, or two and four, which are huge, provide a lot of shade, provide bad lies, tough shots. I understand that. But if you have a replacement idea or suggestion, which is really, I think it's imperative, because we lost a big tree on 17. Now you have a background of the new condos back there, and it's not very pleasant. And also, you lose the depth perception teeing off because you don't know how far the water is in front of you, but if you had several trees up there. So if that kind of ideas and plans could be suggested via the golf committee, which also gives a lot of ideas and suggestions, it should never be part of the Sunshine Rule. So anyhow, that discussion, and I hope tree replacements are going to be on the agenda important because things change, trees die, people die, and they have to be replaced by somebody or something. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Bob Butts, resident. I wanted to bring up a situation that we have in the district. It's probably been there all along, but now with more traffic, it is an issue. And we have a dangerous curve in the district. And it's on San Bruno, which is a street right by the, off of Sun and Lake. And it goes north, where you turn right onto San Bruno. If you're going west, you turn right on San Bruno, and Pebble Beach comes in right there on your right, and then that road curves. And I wanted to bring it up while Mike was here, but he left. And you can't, you can't see around that curve as you're coming around, as you're curving around to the left. Two days ago, my, one of my sons and I just about ran over by a dump truck. We were coming towards the, I'll call it a nursing home. It's not a nursing home, but you know what I mean. We're coming towards the nursing home, coming to that curve. We're on the right-hand side. A dump truck with sand came through and completely cut that corner short to the left, which is easy to do. But he couldn't see us, and we ran off into the bush, and he just kept right on going. But what I would ask is if you could have Mike look at that and see, I don't know what property lines are, but if that corner could be just cleared back so approaching vehicles from either direction could see it, could see. It's, just asking.
I'll take a look at that.
Would you please? Thank you.
As a matter of fact, on the word you're talking about, it is dangerous.
Yeah.
And as to Bill's point, I think there are two trees planted. You're talking about 16, not 17. But I think there's two trees to be planted on the inside, the outside of 16 Fairway, where we took that big one down. Is that correct?
Yeah, we actually, we're going to wind up probably planting four trees over there. We're going to do two of the 14-footers and then two smaller ones. So there's actually going to be four trees put in on that turn on 16. But they're going to be down the slope, more towards the water, so.
Dan, there was two other times they've, we've cleared some property so people can see. So I think all we need is permission from the owner of the property to clear the, I mean, to just cut the weeds down or trees or whatever it needs.
Good.
We did that on number, going to number two deer in that corner, which I think it needs it again, the last time I looked. I think all you need is permission from the landlord. Okay, is that all the public comment? Discussion to and from the board? None? Okay, I'm going to take about a five-minute recess, and we're start the workshop for the five-year capital. Okay, guys, sorry I'm late. Who's going to lead this off?
I think I'll go ahead and start it off, and then once we get into some of the detailed projects, I'll turn it over to the golf guys, and they can explain them a little bit further. So I think it'll be easiest to just go page by page. We'll start off on page one, we'll go over some of the numbers, make sure we're all on the same accord, and then we'll go from there. So I'd like to start on this summary page. This is something that we continue to update as we go through the budget process. You know, forecasts will change, projects may change. But for the most part, it gives us a really accurate picture of where we stand, where we've been in the past, and where we're going. So starting in the left upper box, that gives us a three-year actual allowance of what we've been able to spend on capital in those years. So in fiscal year 18, we had about 1.4 million available to spend on capital. In fiscal year 19, that went down to about 1.3. And in this last year, in fiscal year 20, we had about 1.8 million that we were able to spend on capital allowances through the budget process. So that means we had extra revenues, less expenditures that allowed us to do that. So what we've done for this year, instead of using the budgeted figures, which in this current budget, we've only had 1.1 million for capital, we decided to take more of an actual average, which I think will be more in line with more of an accurate picture. So that gives us an actual allowance for capital to spend between all three funds of 1.5 million. That's a good earmark based on the last three years where we've been. We all on the same page as far as allowance and what we can spend on capital?
Let me ask you this. So I assume if we did the budgets correctly, that this is obviously reflective with a total of 1.5. Is that correct?
It would be close. Like, once again, this year, our budget to actual is off, I can easily pick off $400,000 that no one would have known about before we started the year. So assessments are up $180,000. I had no idea that bond settlements and those things were going to happen. I could have not have forecasted that $180,000 on my best day. The way we went with the golf cart lease, typically in a golf cart lease, we would have applied the net proceeds to the lease, limiting the net total cost, and then amortizing that over three years. That's not what the district decided to do this year. We ended up doing the full cost over three years and then taking a reimbursement check, which makes our revenues look a lot higher, and netting that cost to a zero for the year. Once again, that's something that we wouldn't have known going into the budget process. I was going in assuming we were going to have an expenditure this year for $140,000, which was in the budget. So just those two things alone makes a net positive impact in your financials of $400,000 right off the bat. So that capital allowance is going to fluctuate year to year, depending on, you know, revenues, things that change. But 1.5 million seems to be a good guide based on the last three years of what we can project that we have available to spend and forecast accordingly. Does that make sense? Or no?
Yeah, I mean, you just, yeah.
So the second box at the top gives us our reserve balances. In fiscal year 17, we ended it with 8.3 million. In 2018, it went up 296,000 up to 8.6 million. Then it went down by 639,000 to 8 million. And then we just ended the audited financials at 8.2 million, 3.3 million of that being from the general fund and 4.8 million being from the utility fund. As the auditor mentioned today, GFOA recommends about 20% or six months of operating. We're at 100%, so we're five times the amount of the GFOA recommended amount. I don't think anyone in this room would recommend for us to go down to the 20%, but that's just kind of a ballpark average that what the GFOA recommends. So once again, we have about 8.2 million in reserves at the moment for the entire district.
That was at the beginning of the year, right? So do you have an estimate?
That was as of September 30th, 2020. So now we're six months in this year. So now we'll go down to that forecasted box, which is right underneath. You've got three years of actuals, which shows you the positive 296, a negative 639. Then we just finished with a 186 positive as of September. As of March, I've run a forecast through the end of this year, and I'm expecting, even with all the increased costs in the water plant, tree replant, I've taken all these things into consideration, all of our capital projects. I'm assuming that our reserves will go up by about $680,000 this year. So that's taking into account all our expenses.
And when you say all of our expenses, does that include the suspended capital, like the 30,000 plus or minus?
Yes, that does. I'm still forecasting that out. In the monthly treasures report, you'll see that I'm still forecasting the banquet to be there.
That we're going to spend that.
Correct. I'm forecasting the Aqua Teas, the 120 still plugged in. I'm, right now, with the information I'm giving, I'm assuming those will get completed. So that's taking that into account. So once again, we're still performing very well financially, given the circumstances and everything that's going on. We're still in a good position this year to increase our reserves up to close to $9 million. So the question is, we're trying to set 21, 22 going forward. The top portion of this shows us if we did the forecasted projects with no major projects involved. So for 21, 22, with the projects that we have, golf is presenting $469,735 worth of capital in this upcoming budget for next year. We still have, getting all these projects done, we still have another. Once again, we'd be increasing our reserves by 600,000. At the bottom, we've included all the major capital that we forecast, and we recommend that need to get completed, and then we show that effect. The first item on the list is the Turtle Run Greens Loop, which is 350,000. We do recommend to go ahead and do a playground, and we've estimated the cost of 350,000 for the playground. And then the last item is a new water meter system. We've gone ahead and budgeted for, worst-case scenario, up to full 1.2 million. Obviously, that's a project that we would have to RFP out, but for budgeting purposes, we did go on the higher side on move, just swapping out the entire system. If we did all those projects in 21, 22, our reserves would go down 1.3 million, down to about 7.6, would be our ending reserves at the end of 21, 22. Are we all on the same page as of the first year?
We're on the same page. I'm not in full agreement, but we're on the same-
The numbers, we understand what the numbers are saying. So if we just go down the list of the ending reserves with the capital, if we continue to do every single project on this with the budget allowance using the 1.5 million capital allowance expenditure, our ending reserves at the end of five years would be somewhere around 7.1 million. So that'd be about $2 million less than where we're staying today. The question is, do we want to include, continue to keep these projects in, move them around, shuffle?
Well, I definitely, and I've had this conversation with Dan, there's one I would like to shuffle around, and that's the irrigation on deer that we've been pushing off. I mean, we talked about doing that years ago, before I was even on the board, and it was approved and then pulled. We've got an agreement with Swift Mud to reduce water. We're in violation of that agreement now. This irrigation change is going to help us reduce water, which will help us reduce expense. And given that we're making next to nothing on the million dollars we've got in reserves, and it's a project we have to do that's only going to get more expensive, I would move that up ASAP, whether it's moving it into this year, starting it in this year, or putting it to next year because it's going to take us that long to scope it out. We ought to move it at least to 21, 22.
Why does, what is the real number, or you're guessing? You know, we've gone anywhere from 2 million?
No, our original number was right around 1.6 million. We reduced that to the 1.3 because we had already done the Greens Loops and done some modification to the satellite boxes when we did the Greens Loops project on Deer Run. So that's why we're in that 1.3 million. Again, you don't know till we bid it out. PVC pipe, which is a huge portion of that, is affected dramatically by fuel prices. So had we done it a couple of years ago, it would have been cheaper than it's going to be moving forward. But I'm comfortable that that number's going to be pretty close to what we need. But we don't know until we spec it out and go out to bid.
If we were to do it, how long would a project like this take?
It would basically shut deer down for the summer, which, you know, we've talked about internally how that affects Turtle Run and how it affects play demand-wise in the summer. We don't necessarily need two courses, so it would just mean that we would try to do some extra agronomic stuff, aerification, things like that on Turtle. It would mean that we would probably try to primarily-
It would mean that we would probably try to primarily do ninja tining for the greens aerification so that it doesn't disrupt play or cause the staff to reduce rates any more than we already do in the summertime. There are some things that we have to do internally, but for members, it would just mean that you would be playing Turtle Run for the bulk of the summer.
Are you recommending that we do the loops and the irrigation at the same time? Because that would close both of them.
No, no, the way we had set it up was to try to do the Turtle Run this coming year because at this point, just trying to bid it out alone, you're gonna be six months to a year.
What's this coming year, this summer?
No, we couldn't do it even if we wanted this summer.
So, it'd be the following summer?
It'd be the summer of 22.
And then the summer after that would be the year?
Summer of 23 would be Deer Run.
And there's no way to move it up?
You could move it up, but it would be extremely hard to pull off doing the greens loops. You might could get it done. We would have to, we would have to do some searching with contractors to see schedule-wise if they could. Our problem becomes, our season doesn't really end, our golfing season doesn't really end until May, sometime in May, we kinda typically drop off. You would have to pull off Turtle Run starting May 15th and finish by June 15th and then be able to open it back up and then start deer. I'm not saying it can't be done, it would be an extremely aggressive schedule.
Let me ask you this, if we decide to do both, which one is more important that should go first?
They're both equally important. I would probably lean towards going ahead and doing the Turtle Run simply because it's gonna be a quicker, easier thing. It can be done without really shutting the golf course down, so, I mean, we're gonna pull it off similar to what we did with Deer Run where you do it during some of our summer closures anyway. But they're both priority. I don't wanna necessarily say one's more important than the other. Deer Run is extremely important from a valving and mainline standpoint, but...
Well, let me ask you a different question then. Which one is gonna save us more water?
Deer Run would save you more water. Because you're talking, you know, you're talking changing 600 to 1,000 heads versus changing 200 heads.
So, attacking Deer Run first would get us more in compliance with Swift Mud quicker and...
It would.
Save us more expense on water?
It would.
How much are we talking, do you know?
As far as savings?
What kind of savings it'd be?
Typically, you're in the 10 to 20% range. We saved about 15% on Deer Run on being able to water the greens only, so. To give you an example, we run about 100,000 gallons of water if we run a full green cycle, so we're now in the 80,000 range, somewhere thereabouts. But it fluctuates based on percentages.
Well, I guess to Neil's point, I mean, how much are we talking? We're gonna save 100,000 dollars by doing the irrigation first or 10,000?
He's talking gallons.
I'm talking gallons of water.
Well, I'm talking how much is it gonna save us?
There's really no cost savings because the district doesn't pay for water. We generate our own water through the water system.
Yeah, there would be a slight savings in your power to run the pump station, but, I mean, it's, I don't know. I think we spend 4,000, 5,000 a month.
My point is if the dollar savings is not great, then I would say I'd go back to the way you're recommending, which would be the Turtle first and then the irrigation second. If the dollar savings is great, I'd be okay with Swift Mud.
I don't think the dollar savings is significant. The question is, what's Swift Mud gonna think? I mean, are they gonna be happy if we do deer first or can you deal with them?
They're gonna be happy either way. The way we laid it out was, when we sat with them through the permitting process and Drew was a part of that, they were happy that we were in the midst of doing Deer Run at that time, which earned us a lot of points with them that we had proactively done that. We kinda laid out that we had plans for Deer Run and Turtle Run and that, obviously, overriding concern is it's a huge, you know, number and that that has to fit within budgeting and things and they were understanding of that. I don't think that we would have an issue with them even in the next five years as long as they know that we are working towards that, that we have a plan for it, which we were able to share with them, the initial plans that Altam and Associates had done for Deer Run. So, I don't see us being, having issues with them in any scenario that we choose to do as long as we are continuing to move forward with something.
So, you like the way it is on this piece of paper?
I do. Listen, I'm happy either way. Both are critically important, so.
Well, let me approach my recommendation another way that we put deer first and that is, saving the water is a good thing for us and for Swift Mud and the bigger project is going to be more expensive, given the anticipated inflation and the higher petroleum costs a year from now than it will be sooner. So, it's only gonna cost more to put off the bigger project than to move the bigger project up before the prices go up even higher.
I think that's accurate, Neil. And a question I have for Earl is, one of the reasons we're not just doing the greens loops on Turtle, we're also doing the infiltration, I guess that's what you call it, of the common brythe coming in. That stuff's getting pretty close to the green itself as opposed to the collars. Is an extra year gonna give us that much heartburn or not?
Not really, either way. I mean, we could argue it from both sides. The Turtle Run collars are probably more important to members playing than either of the irrigations because they don't see that, they don't have to, they don't really understand even what that means.
There was a lot of negative feedback from people on the golf.
On the collars of Turtle Run. Which is, which is why we had kinda tied those together and moved it up.
Yeah, but you don't wanna tear it up twice, I get that.
Yeah.
You know, and I tried to explain to them, we're gonna have to wait because we're gonna do something else and they're reluctant, but they're okay with it, but it's very difficult to, as you know, to play the putt off of them because it's stubs.
Now, there are some things we can do to that effect. I mean, we did start about a year ago in the summer, we did some really aggressive verticutting to take that stuff away, but we stopped because we got negative feedback from the summer players about the ridges that it causes us, which are temporary. But I understand all the concerns of play.
I mean, I wouldn't have...
It would be hard for me to prioritize one other or the other. I know that's not a great answer. I just, they're both equally important. They both help us with Swift Mud. They both address concerns that we have to address moving forward. One probably is a little more from a play standpoint, meaning Turtle Run collars. The other is more from a volume of water and appeasing Swift Mud. So, it would be hard to pick one or the other.
To make the members happy, I think you gotta do the collars.
Yeah. Question for you, you said it's possible to do them both at the same time?
It is. Not necessarily at the same time, but we could do them concurrently.
Could you use the same contractor?
Ideally, we would and you may get a little bit of a price break by doing that. You're also, sometimes you pay a little bit more for an accelerated schedule, but we would probably see some savings based on mobilization only being one time. I think we should explore that as an option. If the board is willing to look at that, I'm happy to do that.
I think it makes sense to at least to ask them.
I agree.
Well, anybody's gonna say they could do it. I'm just concerned...
It comes back to the numbers, obviously, but...
I don't mind spending the money. If we, I think we're gonna spend the money either way.
Sure.
But I'm concerned whether they can deliver and we don't get screwed with the cost being closed that we don't want to be caught. That's what I'm...
Well, Turtle doesn't worry me in the least as far as getting it done. I mean, we did Deer Run and it was pretty seamless. We had a little bit of stuff that we had to do for the contractor on the backend as far as cleaning up and filling trenches and things like that, but Turtle Run doesn't alarm me in the least. Deer Run, that's gonna be an aggressive, but again, it's not, you could do it as fast as you want, it just means more people and more machines and things like that, so...
Deer Run, you're talking about running a line right down the middle of every fairway, correct?
Well, not necessarily the middle of every fairway, but it is all new mainline piping, valves, new wire, because currently Deer Run is a hydraulic course except for the greens are electric. It'll go all electric, so...
But it's torn up.
Yeah, it is.
Have you taken three lines on deer or two?
Depending on what fairway, most of them have three.
The problem is now you got three circulars, so you got, the ones that are on the edge, they're also watering the rough and that's where you get your big savings. There'll be some serious savings on deer.
Yeah.
Which'll probably put us into compliance with our Swift Mud deer.
I think, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're all saying we wanna do it, right?
I think we're all in agreement. I think, once again, we can keep this budget for the next budget cycle. We'll go ahead and prepare an RFP, include Deer Run and Turtle Run, see what the numbers come back and then we can decide if we have to make an amendment to next year's budget to include the 1.3, then we can do so, but we'll go ahead and try and ask and do that way.
I think you need to keep in mind too that that 1.25 is a worst-case scenario on this Mueller thing. That could, that could be less, probably wouldn't be more, but it could be half a million dollars less or 700,000 dollars less depending.
My understanding from the way we have to do the financing, it's probably gonna be closer to the 1.2, but we may be able to offset it with a half a million dollars in income if we can get a settlement.
Possible.
Correct.
Yes, I mean, there's a lot of moving targets there, but this is a worst-case scenario. That assumes nothing from the lawsuit, assumes we have to replace every meter and every, all the stuff in every box. That's really the issue. And I don't, I don't know that we can get that done by next summer anyway. You aren't gonna know what's going on with the lawsuit, I don't think. You know, those things take forever. But this is kind of a worst-case scenario that you guys need to understand is, we can do it and still be okay.
Yeah, well, I'm okay with what's being said. It will leave the numbers where they are for now, but see if we can move the two projects both into next year.
Yeah, I can move it. I can put it in the budget and if we don't spend it, that's fine. We can do it that way. So, really, once again, this is the first workshop for golf. As far as the major capital items at the bottom, Turtle Run and Deer Run are really the only golf items in that category. So, we can kinda jump up and go back to the 469, 735, which is what's being proposed for 21, 22 and then we can discuss the 442. So, we can go ahead and jump to page two and talk about some of these line items in more specific bases. Want me to keep going?
I got, can we, once and forever, for one thing at all, get the lease trucks and the carts into an expense line as opposed to capital?
Yes.
We've been talking about this for how many years? Lots of years.
Lots of years.
Lots of years. Can we do this?
Yeah, so I think we should. I think we've, once again, maybe we get a board consensus today, but to Neil's comment earlier in the meeting, once again, there is a $5,000 provision in the Casper contract, Indigo's contract that should be amended or removed. The items that are highlighted in red are highlighted for that purposes. My recommendation going forward would be that nothing hits this five-year capital worksheet that's not over a $25,000 threshold. Anything under 25,000 is an operating expense that needs to be budgeted accordingly. If it meets the definition of capital within the operating budget, then put it in a special GL line item that's meant for capital, but put it in your operating budget. So, the operating equipment and the golf cart lease should be the same, so we're gonna make the necessary changes to do that to the financial state as going forward.
Well, I think that's the right thing to do with one other discussion item and Omar and Dan and I talked about it when we met earlier, is, does leasing make sense? There are some pieces of equipment where leasing makes sense. We seem to have opted to lease in order to spread the cash flow, but it might be cheaper to buy this equipment and maintain it, particularly if we're looking at the lithium carts, keeping them for four years, buying them, hit the capital expense in one year and then replenish the capital because our costs are down in the future years.
Right, golf carts?
Yeah, in this case, I'm talking golf carts, but we could be talking about the capital equipment as well because they're both being treated as leased capital expense right now. So, some of the capital equipment would make sense to capitalize as opposed to lease, some would probably make sense to lease because it's not gonna last very long. But I think we need to take a closer look at that, particularly when we're in a situation because we're a government entity, we can't have our reserves invested to make a lot of money. We're making a half a percent or less. If we're paying 3% on a lease, we're losing money.
I don't have the power to renegotiate the agreement or change the contract.
I understand, but they might be willing to buy out?
Correct. And as far as some of the capital things go that we recognize, obviously, besides the contract, according to Trune's Accountants, a normal cart lease, a 48-volt cart lease would be an operating expense. A lithium is, is a capital. Just based on, you know, I'm just passing on what they would do with GAAP. I mean, ultimately, you know, how it goes, how it shows on the books is the way it is. I mean, it's, you know, it's not my decision at all. I'm just repeating what our company's line is that, you know, we changed this year because we have many capital golf cart leases that are now in operation because they were not lithium. Lithium carts have been classified as, as capital now. Someone above me, Tony or someone like that can authorize those changes, I can't.
I think, I think for the district purposes, we don't care if it's operating or capital. We just wanna see it in your financials and record it on either side, so...
Correct. I mean, we can put it on ours.
The definition for capital and GAAP, we're gonna take care on the backend, on the audited financials. For board purposes, we just need to make it congruent, get it all on one summary sheet and just be done with it. So, once again, I think we can do this internally.
Sure.
We just need to plan accordingly.
That's fine. Now, I know that we've also talked about some of the smaller things going into the contingency lines, you know, so we're not, if, we don't buy an ice machine just because it's on the budget, right? If it dies, we go to the GM and say, we have the, you know, here's three quotes, we'd like to replace the ice machine and, you know, hopefully do it very quickly. And it's usually, you know, we get a 25 to 50,000 dollar, you know, this is your capital for the year for small projects.
You guys are smart, right? I mean, why can't you put in your budgets kitchen replacements or something, kitchen something and allocate money for it every year?
They can and I'm sure they'd like to. They don't wanna have to come to us and argue about ice machines.
Right, but we also find it more...
And we don't wanna hear it either, so...
Yeah, that's what I'm tired of. I mean, everybody, every time something happens, you gotta come to us and ask for money.
Yeah, just put a number in the budget. But here's the thing you gotta be careful with on these leases is that we got a three-year lease payment, but you got four-year carts. Your lease term isn't going to match up well, so you look awful for three years and then like a hero of the force, so we gotta figure a way to do it that makes sense from an accounting standpoint, but that's not hard to do.
And I just think most of us are, don't care how you do it, but we have to know and has to show exactly what we're, what's costing us and what it's not.
Sure.
And right now, it doesn't reflect that. I mean, I hear all the time, the golf course isn't losing money. I mean...
I haven't told you that.
You know, it's, I mean, come on.
They didn't see the highest in front of the numbers.
If you're talking with me, almost every time, I'm gonna speak about EBITDA because that's something we can control because half the timeline capital, you know, we may, you know, we may recommend something else that gets approved.
Right.
I'm not saying here, but it happens.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta, we gotta get everybody in the position where they're doing what's right for the district. And, you know, when you look at all those gators coming off the lease, do you replace all of them? Well, you might if it was just our money, but you're not gonna if it shows up in yours. You know, I mean, it's, I mean, you're gonna do what's right, I get it, but there's a temptation, I get it.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously, you know, the way I approach it is, is, you know, we're judged on our performance, so, you know, we wanna run it like we own it.
Exactly.
Unless there's other, you know, we've been instructed otherwise, that it's a certain vision that we want to carry out. vision that we want to carry out, and that's what we recommend. I know I was in the maintenance building with Earl two weeks ago, last week, and we went over certain things that are coming off package and whether we want to, you know, we wanted to recommend to purchase or to replace. I mean, I don't have all the details on those, I know he was doing it, so. The process is in place.
That's why we pay you, and that should be why we leave you alone to run it.
I will, I will say this, and I'll go on record saying it, and I have no problem with whoever I might offend with this comment, but I can 100% assure you that golf has looked after the capital numbers closer than the district has ever looked at, and I'm talking equipment only, as far as what our R&amp;M costs are, what our replacement is, what types of units we need, the numbers of units. And we've discussed, and I've told you pretty frankly since you took over, that I think it needs to be looked at as a whole. I do think there's some redundancy between the two departments. I think there's some, there's certainly some better purchasing power, there's some better warranty-type stuff that the district could take advantage of that they don't currently. There are numbers of carts, mowers between the two departments that could be much, much better if it was looked at as a whole. It has never been done that way. We have talked about it, but we've never done it.
Going to be this year. We've already, we've already had that conversation.
I agree with all that's being said. I would just strongly say that, that we have looked at it very hard.
But what I'm saying is, we ain't buying any more gators this year.
We've got to gator for everybody in this playroom.
I know.
It's a, it really is a complicated issue when you talk about, once again, lease. We really don't have the need to lease because we're going to end up paying interest on that. There's no benefit there. The question is, do we get the same warranty by just buying it outright and making it make more sense? And that's kind of where we're at now, is we're going to try and go and assess that more, instead of just going ahead and biting the bullet and jumping into another lease and saying, no, let's go ahead and just buy this thing out for year one, take the big hit, and then have no cost for three years, but the warranty's still there, the, the, you know, the turnaround on repairs is still there.
I, I can tell you, you don't get the same warranty on buying, you just don't.
There's a reason that we went to it.
Well, the, the main reason, and I'll lay this out here again, and I'm not trying to offend anybody that were on any boards in the past, when I got to this place in 2017, we were woefully, woefully under-machined, if you will. One of the biggest complaints, and I know some of you were on the green committee at the time, one of the biggest things that I got from day one that I stepped on this property is, why do you have two guys doing a job out there that one guy can do? The short answer was, we didn't have enough carts to move guys around, so yes, guys were doubled up on carts at times when they didn't really need to be because it was the only way to move them out to areas to do work. We had three greens mowers for 36 holes, which meant if we had a shotgun on one course, which requires a minimum of two mowers, we had one mower for the other golf course. So then if we had nine hole ladies and had a modified shotgun on that golf course, we literally could not mow 36 greens that morning. We had to choose what we were going to do. On top of that, if we had a mower go down for any reason, flat tire, the guy in the dark mowed up something on the green and it messed up the reel or any of that, we're done. We couldn't do anything else with that golf course. So the plan that we put together was to address numbers, to address the current schedule that we had for golf, as well as catch up from years of, and you guys just talked about it earlier, on the water side, years of deferred purchasing or deferred maintenance. So there were a lot of factors that went into here, this is what we think's a good plan. It was a plan that we didn't have to revisit every year and argue over $40,000 for this machine and $35,000 for this one and whatever. It was a fixed cost that we knew was there, we could kind of budget for it. We promised a reduction in R&amp;M on equipment, which we have more than shown. So again, I'm not getting into the debate, it's something like, you guys know better how you want to do it. I'm just simply trying to lay out why we approached it the way we did, is we didn't have enough. A lot of the stuff we had had four and $5,000 hours on it because it kept getting deferred on purchase, and those are things that you open back up. This board has been extremely good about if we come to you and say we need something for whatever reason, you guys have, almost without fail, said, let's figure out how to do it. It's not a guarantee that every board's going to do that.
That was.
Past boards did not.
Yeah, that was not the case in the past.
So that, that would be my only comment on it.
So somebody explain to me why we can't put them together into one lease?
Put, put, put what?
Huh? I'm sorry.
The Sun and Lake equipment and the golf course equipment.
Yeah.
As, as a Sun and Lake lease.
You, you could. We, Sun and Lake owns their equipment.
Yeah, we own everything, right?
Right. The other, the, the stuff that Earl's using is the lease, so you have all sorts of stuff.
But we're paying for the lease, so theoretically, it's all ours.
Yeah.
It's all yours, all of it. That's been my contention all along, and I brought it up with Tanya on multiple occasions, that you could do better, Sun and Lake as a whole could do better with your equipment, which I'm talking golf and district, if it was looked at as a one unit versus two.
But even, even, and it goes, once again, this is, it gets more complicated. We can talk about gators, for example. You've got gators who were flipping out every four years, and you're paying interest, and you're paying $17,000, $18,000 for a gator to use for four years in golf and then flipping it and continue to do that, versus the district will buy it for $15,000 because they're not paying interest and keep it for 10 years. So completely different dynamics, different way of use. There's no expectation of it has to be a prim and proper team mower to make sure it's cut perfect. It's just different equipments meet different thresholds and, and makes sense to go into lease, some don't.
They, they have a lot of stuff they don't use on a daily basis. Most of our stuff goes out every single day.
But we do need someone to sit there, get a real good feel on the district side of, how many do we really need, what makes sense to go into lease?
I just think before, you've got to put it together. It's all our equipment.
Agreed.
To the extent.
Wholeheartedly.
To the extent that we can, yes. I, I totally agree.
So can we, how do we go about taking this step?
Well, we're still, what, two years in the, we've still got two more years on this lease.
We've got one more, the next year will be the last.
Yeah, we've got one more year.
Next year will be the last.
Yep.
So we need to look at it.
Can't we renegotiate now? If we wanted to?
We would have to know exactly, we would have to have a detailed plan of how we want to move forward, yes.
But if we had a detailed plan, could we negotiate?
Yes. You, you, you're the, you're the money holder, so you can do whatever you want.
Depends on how many cans of worms you want to open up.
Yeah.
I can only fish with so many worms.
I'll, I'll, I will say this, Dan and I've had discussions at a higher level than I ever had before, and I think he is understanding of some of the redundancies that we have and some of the things that we can do better. Omar and I have talked about it, Omar and I have talked about plans for the future on dollar buyout and stuff like that. It would not be hard for us all to kind of dig into it and go through it.
I'd love to see it tried.
Yeah, I think the, the first step, which doesn't require any renegotiation, is to look at, okay, this is the list of equipment that Sun and Lake needs for its entire operation. One list, all the equipment that we need. Then you take that list and you say, okay, this is what we have, this is what's leased, this is what we own, this we don't need, this we should buy out, this we should continue a new lease on. It's just a matter of compiling that list so that we know what the, the right equipment list is. Yes. And Dan's going to be the one that has all the heartache in this because it's going to mean that some people don't get exactly what they want, and he's going to be the one that has to take that.
That's okay.
He's retiring.
I have to ask this, also, is Casp, I mean, not Casp, Trune, or what?
Indigo.
Are you willing to take on that responsibility? Because we're asking you to do something that's not necessarily related to your thing.
Absolutely. I, I mean, we did it when we first got here and started it. I'm happy to do it because I think it would mean a much easier, smoother operation altogether. That's been my contention all along, it's too much.
It's, it's on the list. Earl and I have already talked about it, but, you know, it's, as I said, you, you can only fight so many battles at once.
Well, I agree wholeheartedly what, what you guys are talking about, but we do so many things here, in the six years I've been here, because we can. And we don't look at the overall picture, Earl, if you and I owned this place, what we do. And that's my only complaint, is we do so many things because we can. And we don't look at it like if you and I owned this place, we wouldn't be doing this. And that's all I, I tend to ask. We've got to be looking, would, would we spend $40,000 or $30,000 on something if we owned it? If, if we weren't making money or at least coming close? We don't even consider that. We do it because we can. And that's all I, you know, and I'm not against any of this, but we're not, we don't look.
I think you got the tense wrong. We did it because we could.
Yeah.
I've already had that conversation with the guys over in the other shed, that, no, you're not getting another front-end loader because it's only $80,000, well.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to hear that, but we do so many things even now, because it'd be so different if, if somebody owned this place. We do it because we can, and we have the, the financial wherewithal.
I'm going to treat it like it's mine.
Well, I know you will, and that's why I'm happy, but.
So just going through the list, the equipment, once again, we'll, we'll keep looking at that, we're going to keep trying to make that better, and once again, if we can reduce that number and make it more efficient, that's our goal every day. The 100 cart golf lease, obviously you see the lease payments there for the next, it's a three-year lease, and then we had two years of cash flow emptiness, and then we started over again. It does go down, I'm projecting in '25, '26, because I feel, you know, that, that turnaround, that residual, when we trade in a new lithium fleet going into it, it's going to be a lot different. So that's why I've taken that, and that's why you see a difference of 155 going into the next, next cycle.
Wait a minute, '21, '22, based on what we're saying?
'21, '22, correct.
The only thing that stays is the banquet room partition and the equipment in your golf cart, right?
Correct.
Everything else is going to go.
Correct.
But, but it's going, it's going into a lump sum deal.
It's going into an expense account, right?
Going into the operating budget, correct.
You guys, everybody's okay with that? You guys okay? Do you guys have a budget? Would you make a budget? Would you guys have a budget?
So '22.
In '22 and '23.
We've got the ba, uh, driving range mat.
I mean, we, we want Mike to be able to purchase stuff when he needs stuff instead of coming to us and saying, I need stuff. You need a new ice machine, it should be in your budget, you can do it. That's something that, you don't know when the thing's going to break, maybe we ought to be doing it now. Probably we ought to be doing it now.
Should we not think in '22, '23, that that driving range mat needs to have our attention earlier?
If you could, that's what's, we can have that discussion now, if you want to move that up.
I would think it should be earlier, that driving range is.
35, 35. It, it could be moved up if you want.
Well, that's just me, I don't, I don't know. I would like to see it moved to, uh, '21, '22. I mean, it's getting beat up pretty good out there. Actually, I'd like, yeah, '21, '22.
The only reason it was that far out, I think, was because we had to move the practice green because we didn't want people on the right-hand side any more than we had to, because you, you put more people in danger. But I think we could do that, Earl, isn't that, wouldn't you say? I don't, we can do it next summer.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's one of the easiest projects because that contractor's good and he does, I mean, he pretty much does it all. We just have to get out of his way.
So, so what you're wanting to do is move that 35 up?
We can move that. You're okay to move that? Everybody okay?
Yeah, I, I guess, but it just, again, just what I said, I mean.
Yeah.
We're spending maybe 1.3 million for irrigation and something else for greens loop.
Right.
And.
Yeah, just keep that in mind, that with those changes, we're going into reserves 2.6 million. The more we push in, the more that number, which, once again, the money's there for capital, just.
All I'm saying is, let's move it now.
It's a great idea, but it's just.
It's not, it's not just because we can. Particularly in the irrigation, it's something we need to do.
We have to, correct.
Um, when it comes to the mat, we're going to have to do it eventually. So it's, it's not just because we can.
No, I agree with that.
These are things that we need to do for the operation, and it's just a question of when we're going to expense it. And, and again, it, interest rates may go up, but right now, we're not making anything on the money.
Right.
Well, I'm not against it, but it's just, it's example of what I'm talking about.
Well, '23, '24, I personally don't see any need, this is me, for another re, for a restroom for $100,000, and I don't see any need to do lighting on the driving range for $75,000. I'm only speaking from my side.
If it was not golf course, I'd have a hard time pulling a trigger on a $100,000 restroom, I can tell you that. It would be good to have, would it be good to have? Is anybody not going to play our course because we don't have one or like, I don't think so, but it's whatever.
I mean, the mats will take care of the driving range, I think. There aren't that many people, I don't believe, in your winter who will pick golf balls at the 5 o'clock. I could be wrong. In the summer, it's.
Well, I, I don't think the return on investment on $75,000 for lighting is going to be there. We'd have to, we'd have to sell a lot of golf balls to pay for $75,000 in lighting.
Yeah, I, I think if you want to do that, then there needs to be a business case for it. If you want to do it, tell me, tell me I can make an extra 15 grand a year, then okay, maybe I can figure it out, but, to me, that's, that's pretty nebulous.
So I'm hearing we take both of those out.
Well, we got, you know, and I agree, let's take it out if you want, but we've got to be, it might get added next year. I mean, it's, we're talking about '23, '24.
I understand, but right, right now, this board.
Let's take it out, this board.
At least two of us on this board have said, those are things we don't need.
Yes, correct.
So, so doing them because we can would be the wrong thing.
Yeah.
Well, before you take out the, the lighting, you might want to say, okay, give me a business case. If you want to do it, tell me how much money you can make, tell me how many people will, give me an estimate. I, I don't know the answer to that. I know I've banked people with driving ranges that were lighted at night, and they made a bunch of money. But it's in a bigger city with more volume, I mean, you know, I.
Yeah, if you want to put in a top golf facility, do that lighting.
The way to make more money with lights would be teaching programs at night for people at work. That would be, if I had to create a business plan, that's what I'm putting in it.
Okay.
And also, if I'm going to add like Top Tracer or something like that to then have a, the ability to drive more people to the spot.
Okay.
And then try to capture them in the restaurant afterwards, right?
Now you've got an extra expense because you've got labor and you've got the cost of the Top Tracer.
Correct. I'm not, I'm not saying that it's, it's there, but if I'm going to make a business plan, those are going to be the pillars of my business plan.
Okay, then, then your cost may be more than $75,000. So the, the bottom line is, my, my case would be, take it out of the budget, but if you really want us to put it back in the budget, give us a business plan that makes sense.
I think, I, I think that's fair enough.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Are we taking it out?
Yep.
Take both of them out.
Until next year, maybe.
We're, we're taking it out and blaming it on you. How's that?
Yeah.
Do you have a good five-year plan or bad?
I, for me, it's, this is a good one, but somebody might not think it is other than me.
Well, at this point, I think we're making a good one.
Yeah, you do. I agree.
You have to look at years 23, 24, and 24, 25 are basically zero when you take those things out.
That gives us a chance to rebuild the reserves.
Which is fine. Zero is fine. The discussion could be both.
Another problem.
Yep.
So the other question, though, is, are you missing everything? I mean, is there anything that you can fix?
Absolutely. There's always gonna be stuff that we have, have not anticipated.
A big ticket on it.
Yeah, haven't you seen their plan to rebuild the golf course?
No.
Do we have the big tickets coming?
Listen, and I, I mean this in all sincerity, addressing the two irrigation concerns are monumental. And it's something that we've talked about since the day I got to this property. It was talked about, I'm sure, prior to me, and boards chose to say it. It's not an emergency and we don't have to do it. Um, and I've said repeatedly that it's the right thing to do. We've committed to SWFMA that we would do it. Could you buy another five years out of Deer Run? Absolutely. Nobody knows the future, but you could have a catastrophic event with Deer Run tomorrow. It's a 50-year-old golf course that has, you know, useful life on it. They'll tell you it's 40 years. So I would commend this board for looking at it, the urgency of it, the, looking at spending that type of money. Um, it, I think it's great. So I would just say thank you. And that, that we will do our best to give you the best product and, and be good stewards of your money. Because it is a huge investment, but there are clubs that just don't do it till they have the catastrophic, catastrophic event, and then they do it on the backside. And it always costs you more money that way, so.
And your timeline is, by the time you negotiated, when, when are you gonna turn to dirt? 2021 or 2022?
Uh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to some contractors and see timeline-wise and see if we can get some ideas on how we would do it. We would have to then aggressively put together an RFP and get it out to bid as soon as possible because, um, contractors fill their schedule up as far in advance as they can, so.
So we're talking 22?
Yeah.
Is it, is it possible somebody might be interested in doing the smaller one this year?
It's certainly possible that, that Turtle Run greens loops could possibly be chewed off this summer. Because that's, that's a few pieces of equipment.
I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't if we could.
I don't either.
And I have no problem making those calls. I would call the contractor we used for Deer and several others that've been on it before. Um, it's essentially gonna be the same RFP-type packet with the addition of the sod for the collars on Turtle Run. But otherwise, it's, it's very similar, so.
Yeah, we probably need to get that out now to hit the summer deadline.
Yeah.
So the tee boxes, too.
Yeah. I, I'll ask, I mean, we can talk to land deers since they're gonna be on property. I, I don't know their background in irrigation, whether they stub it out or whether they do it in-house. But, um, those are all things I'm happy to look at if we're, if we're looking at doing that, yeah.
Well, I, I just recommend doing it as quick as possible while you have the support. I really do. It's important.
No, I agree.
So are you gonna make something next, next meeting?
Uh, we'll do our best.
Thank you.
So Earl and I had a conversation a while ago, and it's not necessarily a capital conversation, but it pertains to Turtle Run. I told him that a lot of people are very, well, nobody's happy, which is how we say, the rough areas on Turtle, which is basically all turtle. And when you go to hole number 10, and you look on the left side, it's all grass, which is the hay.
Yeah, you put it in.
We put it in, and it stayed, and it hasn't. Outside of growing a lot in the summer, it's always there, as opposed to dirt. So I challenged him and said, maybe we oughta take a couple, well, we decided, maybe we'll take a couple of holes on Turtle and, and surround it, the fairways with tahia and see if it works versus, you know, ending up with dirt. And that would solve our problems in one, if it works. So I don't know what you guys think about that.
Could you put that in in 23, 24?
Well, actually, I mean, that is something, he, he and I did talk about it last year. Last year was probably one of the worst years we've had as far as how beat up the, the rough got over there on Turtle. This year, even with the added cart traffic, we've done a little better with it. But, um, we did talk in terms of that we could do, and we had even talked about a couple of holes. My suggestion was the left side of number 11 Turtle, which has historically always been pretty beat up. And it gets shaded by the trees on the left. To do that, that hole, and my other suggestion would be to do the left-hand side of number three. There's already some tahia there, but it doesn't come down to the fairway. The process is simply when we close for airification in the summer, we would airify those areas heavy and then seed them. And it would take a few, you know, it'd take really about a month for that to come in. But, um, I'm happy to try it. I do, I don't disagree that the tahia seems to hold up. My only reservation about 10 is, I don't know how much action the left side of 10 gets as far as carts versus like it does as you get tighter. It's, it's out wider. So it's not really apples to apples, but I think an easy and, and non-expensive way to, to try it is to, to do it. So I'm happy to do that.
So when you say non-expensive, you're talking operational expense?
We would just airify it heavier, which, you know, that's a little bit of added labor, but it's not a, a big number at all. And then the bags of tahia grass seed, which you're talking maybe a thousand dollars for, for those areas, so.
Be a lot of pressure to keep it mowed. It is not fun hitting it in tahia that's over several inches deep.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. I'm telling these guys.
Yeah.
You, you hit it.
It probably, it probably is more pressure in the summer, honestly, than it would be in the winter, but, um.
I mean, if it takes like on number 10, it solves a lot of problems as far as how the course works and how it plays. Nobody likes hitting off that dirt.
Sure.
Okay. Sounds like a, sounds like a plan to me.
Unless we stop players from hitting over there.
Yeah, good luck with that. Or we restrict the carts to the fairway only.
Yeah.
So we don't have any other, as far as going out the other years, unless you guys want to go through the justifications. But that's pretty much the extent of the golf workshop. Obviously, at the next meeting, we'll have the general fund and utilities updated. Um, kind of look at this again, revised with updated numbers for those two funds. That's pretty much it for the, the golf fund.
We're gonna look at the cart, go, the cart lease going to a regular expense line?
Yes. Everything on this sheet will now be an expense on the golf finance.
Well, I think if they take over the whole rental thing or team, that should be the stay-of-district thing, not going to that.
What rental?
Huh?
What rental?
Uh, the equipment replaced, the equipment.
Yeah, once again, we're, we're a year out from that. So once again, this year, we'll keep working together. And next year, we can negotiate a new lease with the general fund, but we'll probably execute two different leases and keep them separate, but it'll be negotiated at one time.
Well, we're talking 2000.
20, it won't change until 22, 23. When you see the 180, see the number change from 170 to 180?
You can change it earlier.
No, I don't think it's gonna change it early.
You, you could try to go negotiate earlier, yes, but. But at least.
There's a lot of particulars to work out on equipment for both sides, so.
If he gets it, if he gets it in line, ready to go, let's go.
Yeah. I mean, let's start with the list and then see how quickly we can move it forward. But I, I don't think renegotiating and, and maybe buying out some leases if it makes sense isn't a bad idea.
Yeah.
But my point was that we should leave under capital for the district, not capital for golf, because he's doing wholesale.
Once you get it all done.
Once we get it all done.
Correct, but we'll have to figure some way of a portion in it, a portion in.
Down the county shut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you, you really don't want to pay out that lease early unless you have to because they will, you have to watch those weasely bankers. They figure out a way to get more money out of you.
Yeah, but they're charging us interest on that lease, too.
Yeah, I know it. I've been on the other side of that one.
No, just power. I think that's it, Mike.
Okay, can I wrap it up?
Okay. Take, uh, meeting adjourned then.